Good morning. Thank you for joining the Boston Zoning Commission Public Hearing, which is being held virtually to ensure the safety of the public, staff members, and the Boston zoning commissioners during the COVID-19 pandemic. The open public meeting law requires that I notify the public that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that an audio and visual recording of this meeting is being made. At this point, I'd ask Cyrus to please introduce the interpreters that are here with us today.
Thanks, Jill. Let's start with Avin.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Avin. I'm your Cantonese interpreter for today. And please allow me to introduce myself in Cantonese. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Avin. Now we'll jump to Jardine.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jardine, and I'm your Haitian Creole interpreter for this morning's meeting. Bonjour tout le monde. My name is Jardine, and I'm going to be the interpreter for Creole Haitian for reunion matin. Merci.
Great. Thank you. Next will be New.
Hi, everyone. My name is New. I will be your Vietnamese interpreter for the meeting this morning. Xin chào mọi người. Tôi tên là Như và tôi sẽ hỗ trợ thông tin xem tiếng Việt cho buổi họp sáng hôm nay. Xin cảm ơn mọi người. Thank you.
Thanks, New. Zenilda.
Hello, good morning. This is Zenilda, and I'll be your Cantonese interpreter for tonight, for this morning's meeting. Alo sim. Muy tu buon dia. My name is Zenilda. I'll be your interpreters to cover the afternoon reunion of yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Horon, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Horon. I am the Mandarin interpreter for this morning's meeting.
Thank you. And we'll finish it off with Aurora.
Good morning. My name is Aurora. I will be your Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Bueno dia. My name is Aurora. I will be your Spanish interpreter for this morning's meeting.
Wonderful. The interpretation channels should be open now. So, back to you, Jill.
Thank you, Cyrus. At this time, I'd like to take a roll call of the members at the, that are attending this hearing. Myself, Ms. Hatton, Mr. Nichols.
Present.
Mr. Demella.
Present.
Ms. Miller.
Present.
Ms. Morikawa.
Present.
Mr. Luff.
Present.
Mr. Ostrich.
Present.
Mr. Arroyo.
Present.
Thank you, everyone. Our nine o'clock AM public hearing. This is a public hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider text amendment application numbers 522 and 523, squares and streets zoning. The hearing was duly advertised on March 28, 2024 in the Boston Herald. In a Boston Zoning Commission hearing on proposed petitions, the proponent will first present their case and are subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support and opposition at the same time. If you're planning to testify, please take time now to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click on the hand icon on your Zoom control panel. This will signal staff that you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, it will be blue. If you're calling into the meeting and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for all testimony, staff will announce your name and allow you to talk. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. In an effort to accommodate all who would like to speak about this proposal, each person will be given up to two minutes to comment. Commission staff will indicate when 30 seconds remain. At that time, please conclude your remarks so that the hearing may continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a period of five to 10 minutes for a rebuttal if they so desire. Will the BPDA please begin the presentation?
Thank you. And Cyrus confirming that you all are sharing the screen of the slide presentation?
Yes, we, we should be waiting for Joanne to pull that up right now.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, members of the zoning commission. I'm here with Abdul Razak Zakaria, Adam Johnson, and Maya Kattler-Gold to present amendments to the zoning code that will create new squares and streets districts and advance comprehensive reform of the code. As a team, we want to openly acknowledge this is a significant step towards a different approach to zoning than Boston is accustomed to. Over the last seven months, the zoning reform team has done a great deal of research, analysis, and most importantly, community engagement that has unearthed input and criticism that have meaningfully changed the proposal before you here today and the future planning to come as a result. Next slide, please. Squares and Streets is a citywide planning and zoning initiative to expand housing and realize the co-benefits of development in mixed-use areas of the city and how those benefits accrue to small businesses, on the effectiveness of our transportation system, and on help magnify the impact of city services and investment. These zoning reforms are the first step in this initiative. Next slide, please. The text amendment before you here today would establish squares and streets districts as mixed-use zoning options or a set of tools in the toolbox of the zoning code that can support the activities and development in Boston's main streets and neighborhood squares. To ensure that these zoning options are mapped into areas in a way that aligns with the community development goals, the BPDA comprehensive planning team, working with staff from transportation, urban design, and other city departments, has begun small area planning processes in Cleary Square and Roselandale Square. These six-to-nine-month small-area-plan community processes are where staff in the community will develop recommendations with residents on cross-cutting policy and programmatic needs to identify community benefits that can be realized through future development, to coordinate mobility and public space improvements to increase accessibility and connectivity, to identify capital and program investments that city departments can utilize to address neighborhood needs, and to identify specific design recommendations to further historic preservation and enhance the uniqueness of the neighborhood, and develop recommendations to expand tree coverage, mitigate heat, prepare for an electric future, and advance climate resilience. These small-area plans can be place-based and address a much broader array of tools than just zoning. Only after the completion of planning will we then bring forward to you as a zoning commission through a full public process, making this zoning real by codifying zoning and new zoning districts into the zoning map and implementing plan recommendations. Next slide, please. Throughout this process, we've heard significantly about the need for policy change that can accompany new zoning. And so we would like to highlight three areas where we've had significant public comment and that has been included in the material to you, where we believe both zoning and policy change are necessary. The first one would be anti-displacement. These zoning districts come to you with tailored district dimensions that focus on legalizing existing non-conforming housing and small businesses to help encourage the preservation of existing house stock in our squares and streets. In addition to those zoning changes, we need policies that will refine and expand existing tools that various city departments employ to help mitigate direct and indirect displacement of residents, small businesses, and cultural enterprises. For example, in the Article 80 examinations of the impacts of a project, how can that tool be better utilized to address concern of displacement in our neighborhoods? And affordable housing. These zoning districts are all subject to the new inclusionary zoning that you as a board passed into the code as the new Article 79. We also aligned with city policy for supporting supportive housing, have made supportive housing and allowed use in every squares and streets district, and specifically tailored requirements to the needs of affordable housing developments based on their funding requirements. An important policy that this zoning can help leverage is the city and state continue to seek ways to expand and leverage funding. And then, in small-area plans, we may be able to take the zoning and that policy approach to coordinate disposition of city and BPDOM property in alignment with affordability goals and the community planning process. Finally, small businesses. One of the important moves that this zoning does in setting up a new use table is differentiate the size of retail uses to make sure we're protecting space for small businesses. One of the policy work that we see as essential is helping expand the capacity of main street organizations to support place-based work and services for small business in squares and streets areas. An example of how this could magnify impact is that the city's space grants, which provided grant funding to small businesses to open into vacant retail space across the city. Over a third of those businesses that received grants in the first round of that program needed zoning variances and so thus had to go through a costly and time-consuming zoning process just to open and operate. And so we want to highlight for both you as a commission as well as everyone participating through the process that when we think of a zoning and planning initiative, we're thinking about the importance of zoning as a tool and all of the ways that it leverages and pairs with policy to achieve planning outcomes. Next slide, please.
And as Kathleen explained, it's really important for us that we explain to folks that zoning is this as a single tool in the array of tools our city has to support citywide and community development goals. So in doing this work, we found it additionally important to make clear to residents who haven't interacted with zoning before what zoning is and to ground an understanding of zoning and how we experience it to the day-to-day. As you all know, zoning is a set of laws that are used to guide development by dictating the allowed use, shape, and density of a building or structure in a given area. Zoning not only sets standards and form how and what is built throughout the city, but also plays a really important role in how a city looks and feels because it's where we can embed our development regulations with rules to support both short and long-term goals. Next slide. Zoning in Boston is heavily impacted by our zoning code, which we have found to be quite long, complex, and deeply impactful in how it produces costly barriers to development. As you all know as well, Boston's zoning code, after being enacted in 1964, has received several piecemeal amendments in addition of chapters known as the Articles that have led to an almost 4,000-page document with inconsistent zoning regulations and inequitable development outcomes that stem from them between different parts of the city. We found that that length of the zoning code also serves as a proxy for its complexity, where there are more confusing rules for property owners to follow and act on, even those who aim to make simple changes to their property. This leads to a series of bureaucratic hurdles, longer periods of time for all scales of development projects, confusion around what is actually allowed, and increased costs to property owners as those factors accumulate. Those increased costs in the process of development often carry over and lead to increased costs for tenants of projects that do get built. Next slide. It's from this understanding that our zoning code is not structured to meet our comprehensive and citywide goals of today. And as we pursued this opportunity to reform the zoning code, we are focused on achieving reforms that align with the goals of resiliency, affordability, and equity. In practice, these goals translate to a reformed zoning code that can encourage increased climate resiliency and sustainability in development projects. They also translate to zoning that permits levels of density and smart growth near transit resources that are, that not only promote housing development, but also makes much of our existing housing stock compliant with the zoning code. In censoring equity, we are also promoting zoning reform that pairs well, as Kathleen mentioned, with tools that prevent displacement, encourage good design, and establish equitable development standards across our entire city and not just in specific areas. Our zoning reform work is also guided strongly by our goals to actually make the zoning code more accessible and less daunting. This means making it more readable and enhancing its usability, amending many regulations to align with modern building accessibility and energy code standards, as well as existing built forms to reduce nonconformities and promote feasible projects, and establishing regulations overall that are enforceable and that reduce overreliance on the zoning board of appeals. Next slide.
This process, the very first step towards the larger zoning reform that the mayor identified as a priority for the BPDA and for our planning work. The work of zoning reform was expected to receive the very kind of intense interest and public comment that we want to acknowledge has come to both the BPDA board and the zoning commission's way as you consider this item. Our role at the BPDA has been to ensure that the city conducts a fair, transparent, rigorous, and responsive process, open to all community members, to achieve the goals that we all agree on. The Squares and Streets Initiative kicked off in September of last year. In October, BPDA staff presented the reasoning behind this zoning initiative and initial findings and ideas. From the very beginning, the BPDA has worked with the community and stakeholders to extensively reexamine, revise, and improve what is before you here today. Next slide, please.
And following up on that, our staff utilized multiple methods to gather feedback on the zoning districts from residents, local users of the code, such as small-scale developers and designers, and other city hall departments, including the Inspection Services Department and the Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion. This included several informational meetings for community groups and focus groups with development and design professionals to inform those groups about the analysis and recommendations being created in this process and to hear their feedback while this amendment is being drafted. Staff also conducted 35 sessions of hour-long office hours that were held weekly from November 2023 through early March for local residents. Through these office hours, our staff were able to provide a smaller-scale forum between our sequence of public meetings to answer questions, gather feedback, and encourage conversations around the role of zoning and planning in reaching citywide and community goals. In particular, staff, including myself, were excited to hear from residents that their attendance of office hours were some of the few and new opportunities they had to speak with a resident from another part of the city about zoning, development, and planning, which is indicative of our goals to strengthen and uplift those tools as opportunities for citywide comprehensive planning and zoning reform. From December 2024 through February of this year, there was a public comment period during which we received over 240 comments and over 35 letter submissions. Staff would share these comments weekly on our website and through the zoning notices newsletter to share those comments transparently and to further encourage citywide public conversation on the shared and divergent ideas of planning and zoning and how they help us reach community goals. Each of those public comments and letters received during the public comment period also received an individual response and was posted publicly for all to review. Next slide. It was through approximately 100 of those comments and letters where we heard common themes related to the importance of future planning, discomfort with citywide zoning reform, and discomfort around the pace of change. Many of the, many of these themes and concerns, as you can see on the screen, works that were expressed have strongly informed and will continue and inform the planning and engagement work that the BPDA staff are undertaking as part of the Squares and Streets planning processes. Next slide. It was also through approximately 170 comments and letters where themes in support of the text amendment emerged around residents' frustration with the status quo as it relates to the impact of zoning, a sense of urgency for change, and a strong focus on promoting housing by way of this zoning amendment. Next slide. The drafting process for this zoning text amendment began with an analysis period starting in August of 2023, followed by a series of six public meetings to share work in progress and explain the zoning from analysis through drafting and revision based on community and city hall feedback. It was also during this period that BPDA comprehensive planning staff held initial engagements to prepare residents for the upcoming planning processes and to gather initial information around citywide interests related to squares and streets areas. A lot of the information that was shared during that process also complemented the engagement that we were doing related to the zoning text amendment. The initial full release of that zoning text amendment came within December 5 of 2023, followed by the public comment period, as mentioned, where we shared some of the broader themes. Next slide.
And we're sharing this timeline with you here today because we want to continue to highlight the importance of the, how we integrated feedback at each step of this process and explain to the community through public meetings, through release of those comments, and through response to those comments, why we were or were not incorporating a change. So in the extended this comment period, given the significance of this amendment to be a two-month public comment period, and we've released that individual response to every public comment and letter with many changes incorporated into the draft. As we brought forward a draft for adoption, we annotated every change that we made in the revised draft amendment, explaining why we were making that change and what feedback prompted it. During this time, the amendment continued to go through legal review, and the amendment you see before you today has benefited from three rounds of legal review to ensure it's functioning as an amendment itself and in terms of how it fits in across the code overall. This came before the BPDA board in March and is now here before you at the zoning commission, and we are excited about how this sets us up to then move into the second phase of planning. Next slide, please. We will now walk through the zoning text amendment, which is before you here today, and enable squares and streets zoning, including the changes that it makes across the code. As you see, there are four articles where we are making primary additions to the code, first being changes to Article 8, which are part of the package of land use modernization. Article 26, which establishes new districts for squares and streets. Changes to Article 2, which add new definitions that allow us to introduce more form and performance-based components to the code and regulating dimensions. And changes to Article 23 to establish modern parking rules for squares and streets districts. The text amendment before you also includes edits to preserve functionality of the code for both existing and making these new districts subject to other provisions of the code, such as in the establishment of districts, the application of regulations, how conditional uses function, the organization of the code, and how modernizing land use regulations into one article. Other provisions that we need to avoid duplicate provisions in Article 181922, making sure that squares and streets districts are subject to sign regulations in Article 11 and loading regulations in Article 24, as well as the Article 80 review process and the provisions for urban agriculture we have across the city. And again, we've legally vetted this to make sure that we're bringing forward to you amendments that don't have unintended legal consequences in the function of our code overall. I'm now going to turn it over to Maya to walk through the substance of the land use modernization. Next slide, please.
Okay. As Kathleen said, we're going to walk through the land use modernization aspect of this amendment. Next slide, please. So starting with some context about zoning land use regulations, as you're all aware, as commissioners in Boston's zoning code, each land use is delegated as allowed, conditional, or forbidden in each district of the city in a use table. Conditional means that it requires a conditional use permit from the zoning board of appeal based on a set of criteria. To create the zoning for squares and streets, we wrote a new use table in Article 8, which is part of the city's base code. You can see an example of what this new table looks like on this slide. As you can see, this table has some uses regulated differently depending on their size. Sorry, the formatting got messed up. It's circle, small and large grocery stores. And you can also see that this table has some uses regulated differently depending on whether they're on the ground floor or upper floors of buildings. Next slide, please. To create this new use table, we started by taking inventory of all the uses that are currently in the neighborhood articles of the code and removing obsolete uses like payphones. We then wrote a new set of consolidated uses and definitions by grouping together uses that have similar impacts. We included size thresholds and performance standards for some uses to control impacts in a more targeted way. We also worked with many of our colleagues and other city agencies to ensure that our new definitions are aligned with our regulatory requirements and policy goals and have clear interpretations for all users of the code, particularly the Inspection Services Department. Next slide, please. This resulted in 16 pages of new zoning, including the new use definitions and use table, which has the regulations for the squares and streets districts. Our long-term vision is that this table will have the regulations for every district in the city, which will allow us to make more timely amendments and updates to the use regulations because they will exist in only one place in the code. Next slide, please. Our new use table, we created a category of uses called active uses. You can see the uses that are in this category listed on the slide. These uses are things that make something feel like a main street. They're typically open to the public and help make an area feel vibrant and welcoming. We created this category in the zoning code because it allowed us to create a requirement that buildings in the S3 through S5 districts have ground floors that are occupied primarily by active uses, public open space, or civic uses. Next slide.
And so while we were looking at how to modernize land uses, we were also examining the challenges that are caused by our existing zoning's outdated dimensional regulations. The regulations in our current code do not align with our existing built environment, nor do they anticipate and allow for advancements in energy code, accessibility, or building codes, all of which limit opportunities for new housing and for mixed-use growth. So we set out to create updated dimensional regulations that, that do align with building code that can create more as-of-right housing options and options that are responsible to, responsive to sustainability and to public realm goals as well. Next slide. And to do this, we took a close look at what residential development has been proposed, extensively vetted, and approved through the Article 80 process over the past five years. With the help of Andrew Namias, a senior planner, I want to acknowledge who's critical to this who couldn't be here. We took a qualitative and quantitative measurement of over 200 precedents. And then, on top of that, we took an even deeper dive into a subsample of about 40 of those precedents, all to understand what can be built and is being built under modern building code. And this analysis demonstrated how building code and project review thresholds are driving building size, how parcel sizes are driving building shape, and how building types can be categorized by their use. And ultimately, how we can best shape building form and lot standards for new mixed-growth, mixed-use districts, and how we can enable more housing and mixed-use growth. Next slide.
We now like to walk you through the Article 26 section of the amendment. As Kathleen noted earlier, this draft amendment touches a large number of articles across the code, but the largest changes are within the articles listed here on the screen. Article 26 is a new article, which creates the squares and streets districts with corresponding new definitions in Article 2 and district declarations in Article 3. We also removed parking minimums from squares and streets from Article 23 and adjust off-street loading requirements CY to line up with the recently adopted changes in Newmarket, also under consideration within Matapan. The changes in the articles mentioned earlier in the presentation primarily enable these changes to work with the rest of the zoning code. Next slide. The new Article 26 will add six new mixed-use districts to the code. Their use regulations are in Article 8 and the modernized land use tables that Maya was speaking about earlier. But additional use and form details beyond that initial level of detail live almost entirely in this new article. Next slide. The districts, as you can see here, increase in intensity and activity with form controls and different land uses. At one end of the scale, S0 and S1, the uses are primarily residential and lower in scale, with some allowances for commercial use when appropriate. S2 and S3 districts allow for typologies we commonly see in main street districts and corridors today, allowing or even requiring ground-floor commercial while allowing for multifamily development on upper floors. And the S4 and S5 districts provide the widest range of allowable uses and a scale of building that can still be appropriate in selected squares and streets study areas to ensure that modern zoning rules still provide a framework even for projects that will undergo more extensive project review. Next slide. Underpinning much of this reform is also a shift to a more form-based approach to zoning regulations. Rather than relying, as is currently the case, on the belt and suspenders of not only dimensional constraints, but also things like floor-area ratio, each of the districts are designed so that lot standards, allowable building form, and uses align and increase predictability and appropriateness of the various standards. Next slide. All districts include common dimensional limits to reflect existing urban design, transportation and mobility, and environmental goals. These factors that are shared across these districts allow them to not only complement each other as part of broader citywide planning, but also to ensure that residents, businesses, stakeholders, developers, and advocates can better understand, apply, and work with the zoning code. Next slide. There are also a common set of uses applied across the districts from the S0 district through to the S5 district, modified as is appropriate to the scale. In all cases, the uses are primarily residential with community uses also allowed. As the scale increases, some commercial uses are also allowed and eventually required on the ground floor as active uses. Research labs and PDAs are not allowed within squares and streets districts. And I'll pass it back to Adam to speak more on each of the forms and Maya to speak on the uses.
Excellent. Next slide. So like Abdul said, we're now going to quickly walk through each of the districts and what distinguishes the form and the land use of each of them, starting with S0, the transition residential district. As the name suggests, the S zero district is primarily a residential district that provides transition from lower activity residential areas up to mixed use and higher activity squares and streets areas. Of all of the squares and streets districts, S zero has the smallest floor plate requirement and lot coverage requirements and the largest yard requirement and permeable permeable area of lot. Next slide.
Allowed uses in S zero are mostly limited to residential uses and civic uses like childcare centers and schools. Residential uses are allowed only up to fourteen units, which is sub Article eighty scale. In addition, there are a few other uses which are conditionally allowed, which allows for opportunities for things like corner stores and coffee shops in these transitional residential districts. Next slide. In an earlier version of this zoning that we presented to the public, S zero was more limited in terms of uses. Through the community engagement process, we heard that many wanted to see opportunities for things like small retail in this district. And so we made small retail conditionally allowed as well as small service establishments, which can allow for things like hair salons and other types of small businesses in the S zero district. Next slide.
The next district, the S one Main Street Living District is also principally residential, but does introduce more opportunities for some mixed use activity. S one also requires smaller scale side and front yards as well as minimum permeable area of lot. Next slide.
In terms of uses, the small active uses which are conditionally allowed in S zero become allowed in S one, some restricted to the ground floor. A few additional uses are allowed or allowed just in the ground floor, such as museums, clinics and medium sized offices. Next slide. A few additional uses are conditionally allowed on the ground floor in S one, including large restaurants and medium retail stores, as well as banks and standalone ATMs. Next slide.
And so moving up to S two, the Main Street Mixed Use District. This district is distinguished by small to medium scale mixed use buildings that are able to fill the width of a lot in order to help create a continuous and very active main street environment. Because this district does not have extensive yard requirements, this district introduces the requirement for an outdoor amenity space so that things like to provide for balconies, plazas and roof decks. And this district also sets a maximum for the blank wall of the facade. Next slide.
The allowed uses in S two are mostly the same as S one with most residential uses and small active uses allowed. There are a few additional active uses allowed, including large retail stores. Next slide. In S two, most large active uses are conditionally allowed. There are also a few commercial uses conditionally allowed. The main difference from S one being small hotels are conditionally allowed in S two. Next slide.
The S three Active Main Street District is characterized by medium scale buildings that are required to have active uses on the ground floor. And these buildings are also prohibited from having dwelling units on the ground floor primary facade. Next slide.
In S three, most residential uses are allowed, most commercial uses are allowed or conditionally allowed, and most active uses are allowed with some being restricted to the ground floor. Next slide.
The S four Active Squares Mixed Use District enables medium to large scale mixed use buildings. This district has the widest range of allowed uses compared to the previous districts which we've discussed. Like S three, active uses are required on the ground floor and this district has a more restrictive lot coverage requirement for very large parcels. Next slide.
As Adam said, S four has the most flexibility in terms of uses with most residential, active and commercial uses allowed and very few limited to the ground floor. Next slide.
And so lastly, the S five Placemaker District enables the largest scale mixed use buildings of all of the squares and streets districts, allowing the same wide range of uses as S four with that ground floor active use requirement and an even higher outdoor amenity space requirement. This district is only intended for highly active areas that are close to transit hubs and that can support planned for higher density. We received strong feedback supporting the inclusion of this district as a means of providing more zoning options that can enable high density housing growth as well as services and wherever those might be appropriate. Next slide. Together, these districts form a palette of zoning options that, as applied in this example graphic of a hypothetical square, can be used to increase housing opportunities, provide for a mix of uses and with all of that, create vibrant activity and economic growth in our existing neighborhood centers. Next slide. And so how these districts will eventually be mapped will only be decided on through the small area planning process, working with the community to select and determine which districts are the most appropriate for each area. Next slide.
So in bringing these before you, we want to acknowledge that during the comment period that we received and the BPDA board also received many comments asking to slow down the process of updating zoning to make sure neighborhoods are comfortable with the changes. Now you as a zoning commission have also received many comments looking to substantively amend and change the amendment forward you hear today and bring forward different zoning. We want to reiterate that we've approached this amendment and this process with a couple of key principles. To get a simpler, more effective and more equitable code by not restating requirements, such as the provisions of other articles of the code or the provisions of city ordinances that exist outside of zoning for decolative language. All of these requirements and their provisions, such as Article thirty seven green building, all the provisions of Article eighty review, Article eighty five demolition delay, affirmatively furthering fair housing and all city ordinances outside of zoning, already applied to any zoning district in the code and the city, including future zoning districts like squares and streets. A second principle was to uphold the important policymaking authority of city council and the mayor's office on important issues like budget transfers, resources for anti displacement and tree protection that will require resources and or lawmaking that exists outside of your authority as a zoning commission and the zoning code to regulate. To hold a rigorous community process at each phase of the planning and zoning initiative. Engagement, as we recapped on this updated zoning began in October of last year and the draft zoning has been out for public comment and vetting since December, including three rounds of rigorous legal review. Amendments of this scale and substance require a rigorous public process. To implement the mayor's vision of empowering community planning as what set rules for how we go, rather than our current system of project by project negotiation in the development review process. The planning process for squares and streets is already underway and the creation of an updated zoning map that makes these districts real as a result of that planning process will be essential. As we've walked through in this presentation, the proposed zoning will not immediately take effect anywhere. They will add these heavily vetted districts as options to the code. They will only be made real through future planning, community engagement and the future actions of this commission to amend the zoning map and apply it to specific places and parcels of the city. The BPDA team is working towards the development of a code that reflects our built environment, that furthers policy priorities and respects and reflects Boston as one city of neighborhoods. Thank you, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Kathleen and team. At this point, I would ask if any of the commissioners have any questions for any of the presenters. Are you shy? See your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was just curious, how in depth was the engagement throughout this planning? Because I've been hearing like mixed things, so I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think, you know, as a critical step in in zoning reform, right? Change is very difficult. So that's part of why we really started with this process of sharing findings versus coming out with a proposal. And that's been a shift, right? And it's been a shift for folks to also engage with the zoning as a proposal to update zoning, not as a proposal to set out specific development rules in a specific geography that would immediately apply. So we began that engagement process in September. As Abdul recapped, we had six in-depth public meetings. They were all noticed and included interpretation, like the excellent interpreters we have here today. We hosted thirty five office hours, which are opportunities for, you know, individuals to come and have one on one or small group conversations to answer detailed questions. In, you know, bringing this forward, we also set up focus groups and as part of the larger planning initiative, attended any, the meetings of any organization that requested to answer questions about both the zoning as well as the planning initiative to come.
Again, so I've heard really mixed reviews on the engagement. I've heard there hasn't been any. I've heard there's been some. And so I just, I just want to make sure that people feel that they have the opportunity to actually sit down and be engaged with a, with something that's going to change the scope of where they're living. I also you know, you stated that you sent out information for people to be included and there was diverse languages included. Did I hear that correctly?
Correct.
And so with all of that, do you feel like the data was saturated? Do you feel like the data that you have in the sample of people that actually came out? Do you feel like it was saturated data? Do you feel as though it was a really a robust engagement? So people of color were sitting at the table? Not just one or two, but like a majority of folks were actually there to participate in the discussion?
And I know our Director of Planning, Amy Chambers is here and may wish to speak to particularly the broader effort of zoning and planning. I will say that we have had more direct engagement on this as a zoning amendment than any zoning that we've worked on in my experience at the BPDA. And again, we had two hundred and fifty comments submitted during the public comment period. We thought it was really important to give everyone an individual response to that, and we did that. I think also, you know, as Amy may reflect on and as the hard work on Article eighty modernization is uncovering and studying is that all of our engagement at the BPDA continues to suffer from being under representative of key groups in our city, particularly people of color renters and those with lower incomes. And so while we've taken strategies and in the work they are doing to set out the planning initiative here, continue to focus on that as key priorities. That is a component and a weakness of our engagement and these regulatory processes that, you know, we continue to work to correct and approach more equitably.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioner Miller. I'm sorry, it looked like you were going to say something. Do you want to go ahead? Okay. I was just going to piggyback on Kathleen's comments. I, you know, I do want to underscore the comments that she's made about kind of the change in approach that this particular process has reflected. I think that, you know, to that end, certainly there are just added challenges of kind of helping the general public kind of understand the reasons both for the process that we have undergone and the reasons why we're undergoing such process. I do feel that the team has done a really good job of trying to make sure that they're communicating the message, communicating the why, you know, communicating the process kind of in steps instead of delivering a finished product, which I think, you know, has been certainly a criticism of our processes in the past. He did publish a community engagement report, which was available on our website. We did that intentionally, both to be able to speak to the process that we underwent over the course of the last six months, working on the zoning and in preparation for the planning processes which kicked off earlier this year. In that report, we talked a little bit about both the things that we felt we did successfully and the things that were continued areas of opportunity. And we wanted to do that intentionally to be transparent about the ways in which we feel like we can continue to improve upon these processes. To answer your question, Commissioner Miller, do I think that it's been perfect? No, but I don't think that I would ever state that any one of our processes is perfect. I do think that there has been a real concerted effort to to be intentional about reaching hard to reach populations, to be able to kind of be flexible and pivot, in particular where we're receiving feedback around, you know, making the concepts a little bit more digestible, to be intentional around language access, et cetera. And we've also continued to communicate opportunities to really continue to be a part of the process as it advances and to be really clear about the fact that even in working towards the development of this zoning, which is both based on community feedback and on data, that as we go into these planning processes, we know where we need to be more intentional about reaching populations and that we know, you know, that there's a lot more to come by way of, of, you know, conversation, decision making in terms of the the mapping of the districts themselves.
Thank you, Amy, but I never, I don't want my words to be misinterpreted where I, where I never said anything was perfect or that I was trying to think that you guys were trying to be, that I, I hope I didn't use the word, it should have been perfect. I don't think I did, but.
No, you didn't. You didn't.
I, what I, what I will say is I, I'm a, I don't say a lot sometimes, but I am very intentional when it comes to community engagement. I do believe that people have the right to be a part of, and if we're not reaching, then we didn't, then we as a group of people didn't do a good job. And, and I'm not saying that you guys didn't. What I'm saying is, I want to be very clear, that if you have one person saying, I didn't hear, and you have another person saying they heard, then fine. But if you have more than the majority saying, I really don't understand this process, then how can we move forward? And I also think that it's important where we are changing with the time, everything's on internet and everything's online and whatnot. But sometimes access is not the same for everyone. And so I am pretty computer savvy, but sometimes I even get mixed up on trying to find documents and whatnot. So I can use myself as an example, and I can only imagine someone who's just not that computer savvy to find the documentation. It doesn't mean that they should not be engaged or be left out of the conversation. And if we're not actually moving away from our depths to go outside and to actually speak to people, then to me, we're not, we're not really exiling to the importance of engagement. And so I don't want to belabor the point and I don't want to, you know, make this a back and forth. Where I do appreciate any efforts you, all of you put forward, I just do have a pause because I just haven't heard has been robust community engagement where you can reach out and touch someone. Yes, it may be all over the BPDA website. It may even be, may have been emailed, but there's a, there's a big group of people who feel like they haven't been heard. So again, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to take the floor.
Madam Chair, just if I may, and Commissioner Miller, I definitely appreciate your, your comments, Madam Chair, if I may.
Of course.
So I just wanted to add that we have been very cognizant of the fact that, you know, there's a lot of concern around continued virtual engagement. In particular, as we move back into a space where there, you know, is desire to congregate, et cetera. This process, I would say, probably since twenty twenty has been one where we have done a lot of in-person engagement. The staff, many of the staff on this call. The staff, many of the staff on this call went out to neighborhood association meetings, to different organizations, to, you know, to different BHA developments, et cetera, to make sure that we're having more in-person opportunities. And in addition, the staff, the broader staff left surveys, et cetera, in the libraries and community centers across the city to make sure that there was something tangible that people could kind of hang on to and to be clear about where people could contact us, whether via phone or via email. So I do just want to name that out loud because I certainly hear you, and that's something that's really kind of front and center in our conversations as we move into both the planning processes and as we've moved into other zoning amendments that the staff have been working on. I just don't want that to be lost in the conversation because, you know, I, I hear that feedback and I think that we've had a lot of really intentional conversation about, you know, what our ability to be flexible as a team looks like. And to be able to, while we haven't quite mastered the hybrid approach to meetings, but to be able to ensure that we're offering both in-person and virtual options.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you, Ayesha. Other Commissioners, comments or questions on the proposed amendment? Okay. If there are none, at this time, I would ask, oh, sorry, Ricardo, sure.
I just want to sort of acknowledge Commissioner Miller's questions. And I think, I think both Amy and Kathleen have addressed them. But I think this is something that should sort of always be front of mind as, as, and I know it is, and it's hard work. But I appreciate Commissioner Miller's question. And so thank you, Commissioner Miller, for raising that question because it is always a challenge to really meet people where they are. And they're, they're not, they're not going to be the same kinds of people that we are on the call today, and it can be very difficult. So just, I know you're working hard on it. Please continue to do that work because it's essential that everyone, that can be given the opportunity, that is given the opportunity to speak out about this important process. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ricardo, and thanks again, Ayesha. I think those are really important points. And also just pointing out what Kathleen mentioned, that there's, there are significantly more steps in actually making this real. I think were the words you used, Kathleen. We've got mapping amendments and as these districts and a lot of the, a lot of the elements of this are eventually applied, there would be significant additional public discussion, hearings and interaction. And, and I would, I would point out that until all of that occurs, and that will reflect public opinion too, we will continue to watch and see how that outreach, in Amy, as you said, that the multiple forms of contact really do become more and more robust and, and show up in our future discussions on how this is actually then make, made real, as Kathleen mentioned. Any other Commissioners? Okay, at this point, then, I would ask for public testimony. And if you could please announce your name, affiliation and position for the proposed project. We will have testimony at this time for and against. And as, as I had mentioned before, every speaker will be given two minutes. And at thirty seconds to go, I will weigh in and just let you know you have thirty seconds. So Jeff, at this time, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. For anyone who would like to testify, please start raising your hand now so that we have an idea of how many people are going to testify. We do have several hands, Madam Chair, so I'm just gonna take them in order. Matt Lawler, Matt, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Great, thanks. Can everyone hear me? Good morning. So thank you to the Commission for your, for, you know, sort of having this hearing this morning and for considering these amendments. Thanks to the staff who have pushed this forward for everyone who participated. So my name's Matt Lawler. I'm a resident of Rosendale. I'm also the Board President for Walk Up Rosendale, which was founded about nine years ago as our neighborhood's pro-housing and pro-bike walk-in transit advocacy organization. We've long supported the concepts behind squares and streets, and we've supported adoption of these fundamental zoning districts all along their path to this point. The reason why we've supported is twofold. We need more housing, and we need it in places where people living in that housing have the ability to access their daily needs and the broader transit and bike networks more easily without having to get into a single-occupant car and driving alone. In other words, we have a longstanding housing crisis and a gathering climate crisis in squares and streets as a policy that helps us deal with both at the same time. So overall, we look forward to their, the adoption of the amendments today by the Commission. We urge them to do so. And then we are, we are actively involved in Rosendale, and we look forward to working with staff and all of our neighbors on digging deep into the specific issues that we've been tracking through the smaller, small area planning process in our neighborhood that is now unfolding. So again, thank you for pushing these amendments forward. Thank you for the effort to modernize the code, for adopting these zoning districts that will be there as floating zones for us to adopt. And we look forward to working with our neighbors in Rosendale to get it done in Rosendale, hopefully later this year or early next. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Next, Councilor Pepin. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Good morning, Madam Chair and to the rest of the Commissioners. My name is Enrique Pepin. I am the District Five City Councilor that represents Rosendale High Park and portion of Matapan. I just want to start off by thanking everyone that's been part of this process. To the BPDA, thank you for starting this conversation in the neighborhoods, specifically in two of my neighborhoods, High Park and Rosendale. I've been part of many of the conversations with the community and the BPDA, attended some of your workshops. And I've been very pleased with the outreach and just the communications and the conversations that have happened at those meetings. I also just want to take the opportunity to thank all the residents that were part of those conversations, very, very engaged residents in both neighborhoods. And I'm proud to say that I get to represent them in this process. With that, you know, with, with square, when I look at squares and streets, I see an opportunity here to, to expand our Main Street's quarters. I see an opportunity here to bring more housing to the district, to, to be able to say that our communities are growing. And I also acknowledge that our zoning language needs to be updated. I believe the City of Boston has the longest zoning code in the entire country. And I think that that creates a lot of obstacles for new projects to come into the, into the community, which leads to a lot of cost burdens for projects leading to housing being more expensive in our city. I do want to emphasize something that just residents and I are concerned about is the anti-displacement strategies for small businesses specifically. I want to see more of a collaboration between the BPDA and the Small Business Department because a lot of small businesses just are still confused about how they're going to be impacted, what their plan is going to be for the future, and how can we make sure that we do protect the businesses that already exist in our squares while also bringing in new businesses to the, to the district. I also just want to make sure to highlight that when we speak about housing that is affordable, I want to make sure that we are talking about homeownership opportunities in our communities. That's something that our, that the residents are asking for. I also want to take this opportunity that, to state that recently, our office did receive amendments, proposed amendments to this, which addresses significant issues such as advancing net zero-carbon construction, ensuring affordability measures to adjust displacement, protecting neighborhood historical, cultural and natural resources, providing increased flexibility respective parking, commercial uses and housing density options. I do believe that the amendments proposed by, by the residents in my district can be done outside of this zoning conversation. I do see that this could be a conversation about what policy we can implement as a city council or, or just as a city. We can look at what city ordinances we can establish. Working with BIRDLE to make sure that there's net zero-carbon construction across our developments. Making sure that we are working with our Small Business Department to come up with displacement strategies. And just making sure that we are working with our Article eighty-five commission to preserve historical infrastructure. And with that, you know, I do want to recognize that there has been a lot of efforts put into this. Squares and Streets has been happening in my district for quite some time now before I was even elected. I would like to, at this moment, just recommend, recommend approval of this, but also happy to explore the conversation of a potential extension, extension of the conversation to, to talk about if there are any concerns, but that's where I stand at the moment. I just want to thank the BPDA and the, and the Commissioners in today's calls and to the residents for, for all of your engagement in this process. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I think just to point out to attendees, we do allow public officials a little bit more than the two minutes because of their positions. So thank you, Enrique. And Jeff, I'll turn it back to you for additional comments.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Jesse Kanson, Jesse, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Jesse Kanson Benanov. I live in Jamaica Plain. I'm the Executive Director of Abundant Housing Massachusetts, statewide pro-housing advocacy organization based right here in Boston. Want to stand in support of the text amendment as before you today in the form that it is before you. As Mayor Wu herself has pointed out, Boston's on track to exceed our peak population of eight hundred thousand residents in the coming years. Unfortunately, we've consistently failed to build the homes that our current and growing population needs to live here affordably. And while some have claimed a building boom here in recent years, the truth is that our rate of building homes has paled in comparison to other large and more affordable cities around the country. We live in a paradigm of scarcity that forces our low and middle-income neighbors in the city into direct competition with wealthier residents for a limited supply of homes, putting homeownership out of reach for so many people and causing severe rent burden for many families across our neighborhoods. The non-subsidized homes that have been built in Boston in recent years are expensive and out of reach for many residents in large part because of our outdated and unnecessarily complex zoning code and development approval process, which add hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, to the cost of building each new home, which is ultimately passed on to future residents of these buildings in the form of luxury rental or homeownership prices. Abundant Housing Massachusetts and our hundreds of-
Thirty seconds, Jesse, just so you know.
Members across the city envision Boston as a city of abundance where homes are affordable to all and any resident can choose to move when they want, where they want. We stand unapologetically for increased housing production for residents of all income levels. We applaud Mayor Wu and the BPDA's leadership in advancing this conversation about modernizing and streaming our codes. And we see the squares and street zoning before you today. And the entire initiative is a constructive first step towards building a more affordable Boston. And we look forward to this conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jesse. Thanks.
Okay, Kenan Ryan. Kenan, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name's Kenan Ryan. I'm a Roxbury resident. Don't have any affiliation. I'm just here on my own behalf. I want to thank all the planners and city staff who have worked on this thoughtful and difficult planning process. I'm in support of the Squares and Streets zoning reform. Our current system favors entrenched property owners, frankly, like myself, over the greater good of other residents. In our least dense neighborhoods, the lengthy and complicated variance process can lead to low, lead low to mid-income housing homeowners from investing in their properties due to the confusing regulations and significant cost burden associated with pursuing of zoning variance. And in dense, in denser residential projects, pursuing a variance adds significant costs, which ultimately causes developers to seek higher rents from future residents to cover the cost of the process. The lengthy variance process also allows community members like myself the opportunity to negotiate down the scale of the project, ultimately reducing the potential number of new home opportunities for other Bostonians. With our ongoing housing affordability crisis, we need as many new units built at the lowest cost to ease our housing prices over time. I want to see more Boston residents stay in Boston. I don't want to see more friends and neighbors being priced out because of our low housing stock. Squares and Streets provides an additional avenue for increasing housing production in Boston and is fundamental to achieving the mayor's goals of building thirteen thousand new units by 2025. I look forward to seeing how the new zoning distance will be mapped across the entire city over time. And I welcome the use of the densest districts like S four and S five in my own neighborhood. I hope-
You have thirty seconds.
Squares and Streets, so, Squares and Streets zones apply to all of Boston's neighborhoods so we can have more opportunities for renters and expanding families to stay in Boston. I encourage you to vote in favor for adopting Squares and Streets zoning. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Jeff?
Okay, next, Jordan. I'm gonna take you out of order. Jordan Freyas, go ahead.
Good morning. Can you hear me? All right, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jordan Freyas, and I'm Director of Policy and Communications for Boston City Council Benjamin Weber of District Six. So I just wanted to read the, the Councilor's comments into the record. Our office has followed the issue closely and has appreciated the engagement from the BPDA team. Our office has received significant feedback, both positive and negative, from our constituents. We believe building more housing is absolutely essential to ensuring housing affordability. There are real concerns such as displacement and affordability, and we are committed to addressing those where it should be legislatively rather than through zoning. We are not opposed to a short extension of two weeks to allow us to digest the BPDA's response to promised amendments, but defer to the judgment of the Board. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jordan.
Okay, next, Breann Frank. Breann?
Hi, everybody. My name is Breann Frank. I'm a resident of Brighton, and I'm here on behalf of Alternatives for Community and Environment, which is a Roxbury-based organization. For thirty years, ACE has advocated for neighborhood health, affordability and sustainability. And it is because of this advocacy that we cannot support Squares and Streets in its current form. Squares and Streets has the potential to be a positive force in Boston zoning and development, but is currently more likely to cause mass displacement and stimulate gentrifying forces. For Squares and Streets to work effectively and not perpetuate the harms of urban renewal under a new name, there must be meaningful changes to its language. First, the BPDA must make explicit in the zoning code itself what the public engagement process for a Squares and Streets project will look like. The zoning touts a community-centered approach in which planning officials will work with community stakeholders to plan development, but there is no language requiring this engagement or ensuring that it is meaningful. The current BPDA staff has good intentions, but will this be true in ten or twenty years? And even where this engagement does happen, there is nothing ensuring that it is meaningful. How much engagement is required? How will it be incorporated into development? Will resident voices outrank developers? We don't know. Secondly, the BPDA must explicitly enshrine fair housing and anti-displacement language into the zoning code. Affordability is one of the stated goals of Squares and Streets, but the zoning text does not expand affordable housing or contain measures insulating housing costs from skyrocketing. When a neighborhood grows an aesthetic and economic value in the way this zoning intends, displacement follows.
Breann, you have thirty seconds.
We've been told that Squares and Streets isn't meant to address these issues, and we should trust that other city projects will. We've been told that this isn't the time or the place for a fair housing audit. That is inexcusable. This will lead to displacement, and we all know that the current infrastructure does not do enough. If Squares and Streets is to meaningfully serve the communities it intends to, it must include language addressing affordable housing and requiring its presence. That's why Squares and Streets should not be accepted by the zoning commission in this form and should instead go back to the BPDA for revision aligned with these concerns. Thank you.
Okay, next is Michael Prokish. Sorry if I confused your name. Michael, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. In my neighborhood, Cotton Square, the process, the outreach process has not reached those who are going to be most affected. There have been a few meetings with community leaders, some of whom don't live in the district. And without community input and collaboration with the community in arranging that input, we need to be co-designing meetings, meetings where residents get to speak as a whole, get to speak with each other. This can't be a survey. It needs to be a negotiation. That will not be accomplished under the current deadlines. This is serious stuff. The rezoning could have very fragmenting, destabilizing effects. It could raise rents for businesses, small businesses, of all residents. It could have serious climate- It could have serious climate impacts, and there are no provisions in the current proposals for preventing what is already a heat island in Codman Square from getting worse. We need those to be incorporated in the code, as well as, as the ACE representative said. You know, we need guarantees of action against displacement, actions for affordability. For that matter, actions to decrease the traffic volume. So, I would urge-
About thirty seconds, Michael.
You know, a delay in ratification, or if not, at least adopting some amendments that have been offered from communities before you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, next is Jen Carte. Jen, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for having my comment today. I apologize for the hoarseness of my voice. My name is Jen Carte. I'm representing Dorchester Growing Together. We are a neighborhood-based civic organization founded in two thousand eighteen to advocate for building abundant housing at all price points to alleviate our housing crisis and preserve our welcoming and diverse community. I'm speaking here today at the broadest level to appreciate this new toolbox of six squares and streets districts and updated use table, which we can deploy to modernize zoning, the elimination of most permitting by variance in these areas that will come about and create efficiencies and the ability to create new homes for our neighbors faster than we have any ability to do today. It will help both nonprofit and market rate developers build not just homes, but retail and service business spaces, offices, and other public amenities. Squares and street zoning also promises to bring investments in the areas of public spaces like parks and playgrounds, small business and economic vitality supports from Main Streets and the Economic Development Office of the City, transportation improvements, et cetera. Such a comprehensive update is key to Boston's continued stability and growth. A supermajority of Boston residents are broadly fine with or even solidly hope for growth and change, but they do not have the capacity because of work, family, or other commitments, information access, sometimes how meetings are advertised or how accessible they are, whether the stakes of the meetings are conveyed, or incentive. They're, they're fine with it. They want it, but they're not passionate to show up in time-limited meetings. I've mentioned this-
You have thirty seconds, Jen.
Thank you. I mentioned this to emphasize the hard work that BPDA staff, I've seen them do since September with the creation of dozens of opportunities pushing out into the community at transit stops and farmers markets into public housing buildings, creating a workshop specifically for youth to engage with and provide feedback, and get residents to provide feedback on the zoning updates that will create the S zero to five districts. We urge the zoning commission to affirm and adopt them today so we can move forward with the small area plans to actually engage in Codman Square, Fields Corner, Rosendale, Hyde Park to start, but throughout the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thanks.
Uh, next is Scott Beatty. Scott, go ahead.
Scott, are you there? Maybe we can come back to him, Jeff?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I just unmute button. Uh, yes, I'm Scott Beatty, a thirty-four-year resident of Hyde Park. Served on multiple boards in my community, been involved with Community Input Board, Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, Rosendale Coalition, that formulated the proposed amendments that Councilor Pepin had alluded to earlier. My concern is that I think that the Streets and Squares people have done a yeoman's job at reaching out to the community. However, in terms of getting to the people that need to know this information the most, I'm concerned about that. We're a community, majority, minority, uh, community in Hyde Park. Our business owners are largely immigrant, first-generation American shop owners. They're the ones that are going to be most impacted by this proposal, and they are not, they are not the faces that we see coming to these meetings. I've pointed out four different developments in our community for the last two years, of which our community had significant voice under existing rules. And what I've asked for is if, uh, squares and streets were in place over these past two years, when these developments came out of the ground, where the proposed, uh, development versus what was actually approved were quite different because of community voices, please tell us how this new, uh, zoning would have impacted those four developments. And we haven't gotten direct answers to this. So, while we've had a lot of meetings, I'm on, I saw in the proposal on page ten, I was quoted-
You have thirty seconds, Scott.
Yes. Having meetings are great, but if we're not getting the answers and the people in our community that are most going to be impacted potentially in terms of displacement and potential gentrification are not getting what they need, then I think that we need to really look at either delaying or minimally looking at the proposal amendments that this, uh, that our community has put forth. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, Ken Fields, go ahead, Ken.
Right, thanks, Jeff. Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Ken Fields. I'm a twenty-plus-year resident of Hyde Park. In two thousand nine to two thousand eleven, I served as the Vice Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the rezoning of Hyde Park, which resulted in Article sixty-nine of the zoning code. I'm also a former Executive Secretary to the Boston Conservation Commission. I wanted to make a brief comment about the outreach and then actually get into some of the substantive issues that I have with the proposed zoning. The outreach, there was a bit of a sales pitch at the beginning of this presentation that talked about how great the outreach was and extensive it was. However, the comment period was over the holidays, and they had that posting of my friend Scott Beatty that actually said, "There's no meaningful responses," after all the responses, "no meaningful responses" upon which we can make decisions. And also quotes Scott Beatty once more. He says, "Let's proceed with the speed of trust." So, this commission should not be a rubber stamp. However, I think squares and streets is a good thing. I think there's a lot of good stuff coming out of this. Let me get into the substance. In Hyde Park, we need more commercial, more service, and also more housing, whether it's affordable or mixed-level-income housing. We need to activate our squares. They are dying, and-
About thirty seconds, Ken.
Okay, so, uh, ground-floor active use requirements are not allowed in, uh, S, are not required in S two. Uh, S two is probably the upper limits of the height that we have in and Clary Square, or you'll get in Clary Square. I think those S zones need to be divvied up better to better reflect what's actually there. There's limitations in the article on uses on the second floor, uh, which should be encouraged by commercial as well, and I don't know why they're-
Ken, that's, uh, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next is Becky Pierce. Becky, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, okay. My name is Becky Pierce, and I'm a resident of Codman Square. And I'm here to urge you all on the commission to please delay this vote and not vote it up and down today because, um, in its current form, it does not, um, it needs way more time for community input, and it does not, um, meet its claims of, um, stated goals of affordability and equity. And, but it would rather, um, if you pass it today the way you have it, it will codify the status quo of unaffordably, unaffordability and racial inequity. I mean, I live in Codman Square. I've been here for fifty years, most of my adult life, and, um, it's a heavily black and brown community and, and a low-income community. And in the past ten or fifteen years, I've watched as people have been displaced, had to move out, had to move out of Boston because of rising rents. The rents have continued to rise. It's gotten worse and worse. And, and, you know, the rents are so high now that most of the people that can afford to move into the new housing that's here are, you know, they're, they're from somewhere else and, and, um, so there's a huge displacement going on, and it's going to continue because this doesn't change anything about the affordability requirements in new housing to be built. You said that you, that the code will continue to, um, include the-
Becky, you have thirty seconds.
The mayor's, okay, so, I'm just saying this should not be passed until there's a lot more time for community input as, as Ayesha Miller pointed out, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Miller, and until there is stuff written into the Squares and Streets proposal that requires a large number of affordable units affordable at the level of people that live here, which is not the city's IDP. The city's IDP is, you know-
Thank you, Becky. Um, your two minutes is over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Laurie Radwin. Go ahead, Laurie.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for allowing me to testify. My name is Laurie Radwin, and I coordinate the Rosendale Coalition. First, I would like the commission to consider the amendments we proposed. Second, I want to underscore the remarks made by Mr. Frank and Mr. Prokisch and Ms. Frank, Mr. Prokisch and my Hyde Park neighbors. Article twenty-six is not ready to be passed. We're being told that the community will be engaged in order to identify neighborhood goals and that the community will drive the mapping process. The BPDA remarks on how important community feedback has been, and I thank Commissioner Miller for highlighting this point. Right now in Rosendale, and as discussed with BPDA leadership, the community that is being heard is composed of over eighty percent white people and eighty percent homeowners. Our black and brown neighbors are barely present in the squares and streets engagement process. You can see these statistics on the Rosendale Square BPDA site. Our personal service businesses, such as barbers, manicurists, and so on, are often owned by Latinx and Asian neighbors, and they are not present at all in the Rosendale primer, um, put out by the BPDA or any of the survey data. It's not time to pass Article twenty-six, as is, until the mapping process has guarantees of equity and hearing voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laurie.
Okay, Madam Chair, and this is a cell phone ending in four, four, five. Go ahead.
If you could please state your name, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name's Craig Martin. I'm with Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. And I, and I also, like other callers, I'm asking for a postponement. Not opposition, not support, a postponement of, of this vote today. I will argue that the squares and streets, uh, the outreach has not been effective. I'm not saying this is deliberate. I'm just saying it has not been effective. I'll argue that the squares and streets that comes across as squares, the Clary Square is, we know it. It's essentially one main commercial thoroughfare. I don't believe at all that the residents and the neighborhoods in a third of a mile around there, which this squares and streets includes, I don't believe that they are aware that there's a zoning change for their streets. I believe that when they see assigned squares, they're just thinking, okay, that's just a commercial district. And, and they're not, they're not paying attention to it. I was involved with rezoning Hyde Park a dozen years ago, and that took two years, but it was a very effective two years. And we had hundreds of Hyde Park residents attending and participating in those. We have not had that on the squares and streets. I've been to every, every meeting. And I would argue that the citizens just aren't aware that they're being personally affected, that their street is perhaps going to be rezoned. Again, they're only thinking the commercial thoroughfare. So, I'm asking that you please postpone this, and we can, let's keep trying. And I thank you for your time, for allowing this time today.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you.
And that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Um, at this point, um, I would close the public testimony and ask the BPDA if they would like to respond to the comments we heard.
I know you all as a commission are very aware of this, but want to make sure we reiterate for everyone that the zoning code works together as a whole and the important provisions that you all as a commission have advanced, including Article seventy-nine, including rezoning, Article eighty-five, demolition delay, Article thirty-seven, green building, every component of Article eighty review, including affirmatively furthering fair housing and all of those provisions. Every overlay that the city has that's applied across the zoning map are always in effect citywide and are an important part of how the code works together as a whole. And we have deliberately thought of Article twenty-six in these districts as fitting into a citywide zoning framework that is subject to all of those provisions. So, they all apply in Squares and Streets districts, and Squares and Streets districts have all of those things by becoming part of the zoning code. The second thing I'd highlight is, I know that, uh, we stressed in the presentation is we're looking to bring these into the code as options so that we can do that deep, intense work of drawing the zoning map with the community. So, by taking action here today, we are not rezoning any property in the city of Boston and thus not changing the zoning rules of any property or any community in the city of Boston. We will come before you with future actions, and we're very eager to get into that planning process, uh, which has the ability to be deeply place-based, to talk about real properties and locations and squares and businesses and what the appropriate zoning for them with that is on the ground with community members. And happy to take any further questions that you all have as a commission arising out of public testimony.
Thank you, Kathleen. Um, do any of the Commissioners have questions for any, for Kathleen or any of the staff of hers? Ayesha?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Kathleen, how do you address, uh, the four people that said the black community wasn't as engaged? And someone specifically gave data details, eighty percent of the people that showed up were white. Uh, how do you address that?
I think it's going to be, right, as we're taking this action and as we look at bringing forward a uh, mapping amendment, we could commit to bringing you data participation of meetings, uh, as folks self-select. And, um, we also think that the opportunity to engage on, like, directly, like, on the ground, not just in person on the ground, but talking about the actual sort of businesses and properties, will make that conversation more concrete and, and change that. And I could tell you that in the work that we've done in Plan Matapan, uh, including using these zoning districts and planning for using these zoning districts in Matapan, that has not been the case, right? We've had, because it's concrete, right, because it is working with community members in Matapan, and because we mailed each business owner and property owner in the area to be affected and flyered in location, that was not the racial makeup of participants in the process. So, that by taking the process out of the sort of space of making theoretical zoning amendments and making it real on the ground, we were able to design a process that got us much, much better and improved engagement.
I think perhaps just to add to that, since we've, um, as many of you heard, Commissioners, um, started working in neighborhoods in Hyde Park and Rosendale specifically, and we've really just begun, um, having conversation and kind of initial meetings in Fields Corner and Codman Square. The staff have been incredibly mindful of the kind of alternate ways that we need to approach engagement in order to ensure that we have a more robust process and a more representative process. The folks who are showing up to community meetings, um, are folks who have time to show up to community meetings. And we appreciate the, um, you know, the folks who are able to be at those meetings and certainly the feedback that comes out of those meetings, but we know that we need to be reaching out in different ways in order to engage, um, additional populations, additional demographics. And so, our staff have been having, um, several smaller sorts of engagements, whether meetings or just popping up in spaces, have been, you know, going to ESL classes, have been going to BHA properties, have been going to community centers, have been trying to take as many references as possible from, uh, residents around the other sorts of spaces that they should be in. And that is perhaps not visible in the context of the broader public meetings. But we're keeping that, um, data as well so that, to Kathleen's point, we can come back to you and really be able to communicate- around the additional work that is being done. We certainly, you know, the data that was mentioned earlier is data from the kind of initial few months, that engagement report that I'd mentioned, and part of the reason again that we published that was to be transparent about where our gaps are so that we could raise the bar for ourselves around what it is that we need to do moving forward and so that we can be clear about what it is that we need to do moving forward to ensure that there continues to be more and more outreach, more and more communication, more and more engagement. We wouldn't have, you know, published that information just to do nothing with it. And we recognize that, you know, outreach is an engagement, real engagement is an ongoing process. So that data is a representative of certainly a point in time, and we've really taken that and tried to continue to utilize it as a starting point so that we, you know, can really more meaningfully ensure success in the process.
Thank you, Amy. Ayesha or any other Commissioners additional comments, questions?
I, I, so I want to say that I think, I'll tell you where my feelings are. I, I, I think the engagement issue, I'm Latino, my parents owned a small business, so, you know, and were felt like they had problems with, you know, the, you know, the BRA back, it was so many years ago. So I'm, I'm sensitive to, you know, the, the comments about inclusion and the comments of, you know, representation. But I don't think this is where we solve that problem. Unfortunately, that is not the, the task that we have at hand. That is, there's, there's embedded racism in our communities. There's, there's all kinds of stuff, but we're a zoning commission. We, we can't solve those problems. We can, we can say you've got to do better. And I think, I think the current staff that we have at BPDA really is focused on doing better. But, but I think it's, it is a tall order, and I'm reminded of, I think, the perfect is the enemy of the good. I think what we have here is good. It's not perfect, but it is good. And so I think that it is important that we actually, as a commission, move forward in terms of the good because what we have right now isn't good. And so I think it's really incumbent upon us to just really think about the good and the good that I think that is embedded in the team at BPDA to kind of move this forward. So that, that's my opinion. So that's, I would be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Ricardo. And we'll go into our business session in a, in a bit, but thank you, Ricardo. Drew? You're on mute, too.
Thank you, Joe. I come here. This is, this is not the, this particular vote, this particular question in front of us, this is not the, the place to, that we actually make decisions about particular neighborhoods on the ground. This is just setting us, providing a set of tools that we will then, then proceed to the next stage. We have one of the most, the lengthiest, most complicated zoning codes in the country. All of that makes it very difficult for small developers and frankly minority developers to be able to really function because it, it's, it's really the larger developers that can deal with the complexity of this. Many of the recommendations that I saw in the proposed amendment are really dealt with in other places, in Article eighty and in so many other places. This is just, if we don't make these changes, we're just complicating things, making it very difficult to develop new housing. And we need housing of all sorts. To my mind, that's one of the biggest issues we have. I'm, I'm in support of, of moving forward with this.
Thank you, Drew. If there are no more questions for Kathleen, Amy, or her team, then I would, Michael, did you have a question? If we have any more questions from them, I would ask for them. Because I'd, what we can do at this point then is to close the public hearing and go into our business session. All right, why don't we do that? We'll close the public hearing and go into our business session. Thank you, BPDA staff for answering our questions. And I would ask of the Commissioners if you have any discussion or other comments you'd like to share. And if you, if anyone is willing to make a motion to adopt this proposed amendment.
I have one more comment, and I'm just going to say this. I understand what the zoning commission is. I understand what we're here for. I didn't need a lesson on that. But what I will say again is if people don't have the right to come forward and state how they feel, then we should not have had any public comment. So therefore, please don't ever say to me, and I, because I felt like that comment was directed towards me. I understand what we're here for. I, I get it.
Commissioner Miller, I wasn't, that wasn't directed at you. I'm sorry if that, I apologize if that was your interpretation. I, what I, what I meant to say was that the issues related to race in Boston are incredible.
Yeah, I'm very well aware about race in Boston.
And so, and as, as am I, as am I. As am I, but I, but I want to say we hear you and I agree with you, and I think it's important to have a conversation. And I think all voices need to be heard. So I, I don't disagree with you at all whatsoever. I'm actually in supportive of what, the things you say. So just want to be clear on that.
Michael?
Which one?
Oh, um, well, alphabetically, how about Michael Demilla first?
All right. It's about time I came in front of Michael, the other Michael. So look, I, I, I appreciate all the passion and, and the responsiveness and the comments that are being made and the opportunities for comments, although, you know, as, as was said, nothing is perfect, I suppose, but I think there is a lot of passion around this issue, and I do want to commend the BPDA for their, for their work on this, both the work behind the scenes to develop the streets and squares zoning as well as the process that they took. And I think there's a lot of hard work done by a lot, by a lot of people, which I would at least commend on that, even, even if it might not be perfect. That, that, all that said, I think, at least from my time on the zoning commission, this is the single most important zoning change that we have the opportunity to make in front of us. And fundamentally, I think a lot of the potential negatives or questions or comments that were raised about the negatives, I think, are far worse if we do not take action on this than if we do. So in other words, the status quo is leading to far worse outcomes than what will be achieved by changing and implementing streets and square zoning and the rest of the zoning reform process that's intended to take place from there. We have to add housing. We have to be able to add it in a predictable way. We have to be able to add it in a way that creates the spectrum of housing types as well as a spectrum of opportunity for small businesses and various, you know, opportunities for the, for, for, for people across all income ranges and all parts of, of, of the city to, to, to live here. And we have, we have, we're lucky. We have a very vibrant and attractive city that is causing people to want to live here in Boston. We have to be able to provide housing across various price points, which this very much, this, the Streets and Squares initiative is very much intended to do. And I expect it to be able to do in a far superior way than what is the status quo under our increasingly or excessively complex zoning code now that I frankly, I think disenfranchises more people than, than what will be in the future under Streets and Squares process and zoning regime, as well as all the other stuff that will come beyond it and all the other more opportunities for even more community input going forward. So with that said, I am certainly very much in favor of the Streets and Squares initiative here. And I'm, I'm happy to make a motion here as well to approve the Streets and Squares initiative, if I can find the, find the, I don't have the, sorry, don't have the exact initiative right in front of me at the moment.
If, while you're looking, Michael, why don't I let Michael Nichols just make comments, and then we can absolutely take your own.
Absolutely. Just didn't find it, but absolutely, go ahead.
Sure. I'm, I'm happy to weigh in just briefly on both sort of process and content and to go in reverse order. I think the content is spot on. I think this is the direction the city needs to be going. I think we need to be building density, you know, housing and otherwise in areas where, where it is appropriate, areas where there are non-conforming uses that would become, you know, an accepted, you know, zoned, appropriate use by virtue of having the zoning code catch up to where the city already is today and consider the future and also allow for the growth that I think is such a broadly held goal within the city. By process, I, I echo just about every one of my, my fellow Commissioners who've spoken to date. I'm not sure there's probably ever been a BPDA process or BRA process in history that is as equally representative and, and demonstrates and ease of access and participation in communities throughout the city, you know, sort of equitable to their numbers in nearly any demographic way. I'm particularly appreciative of some of the changes the BPDA has made on community engagement to, to hire on community engagement folks to seek to identify where the cracks exist in feedback and try and help address those. The Article eighty review process is one that I particularly appreciated. We did not just rely upon listening to the typical neighborhood association, well-connected, typically, you know, more affluent, white, home-owning voices within our community, but are making strides to broaden the feedback loop. And, and I'd ask that that continues to be the case and that in future, you know, zoning hearings on matters like this, we continue to hear the information we heard today about the engagement process and who's being reached. And I, I do think we can continue to make more and better efforts in those areas. But I think the language being used today by the BPDA staff of today is markedly different in this area than what we heard five and 10 years ago. And I hope that that progress continues. And so by, by virtue of both process and especially content of today's hearing, I'm in favor of the Squares and Streets amendment as proposed. I'll give it back to Mike for the motion. If he found, if he found materials, if not, I'm happy to make a motion.
I, I would just also note that we had a couple elected officials here that were supportive. And also, I think, mentioned, you know, the need for continued improvement in outreach, but also that there were going to be future opportunities for this to, to, to improve the engagement, but also that there are, a lot of this can be done outside of zoning. And I think that that was an important thing to hear from an elected official, that there, there's a commitment to augment the zoning with additional legislative action to support some of these initiatives as well. I mean, we can, I, it doesn't mean we should not try to do as much as we can with zoning, but we, as was said by Mike Demella, we have a limited, you know, we have a, we have a mandate. And, and, and this, I think, is also a very good building block for those mandates to continue to be built, so. Thank you for letting me weigh in, folks. At, at this point, if there's no more comment, I would ask if there's a motion for this.
I did find it. So I can make a motion to approve text amendment, application numbers five twenty-two and five twenty-three, Squares and Streets zoning and miscellaneous amendments, Articles two dash four, six, eight, eleven, thirteen, eighteen dash nineteen, twenty-two dash twenty-four, twenty-six, eighty, and eighty-nine.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Thank you. At this point, I would ask, I would like to take a roll call. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Demella?
Yep, yes.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Ms. Morikawa?
Yes.
Mr. Luff?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrich?
Yes.
Mr. Arroyo?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The motion carries seven to one. Thank you. At this point, I would like to continue our hearing and go to our nine fifteen meeting. Thank you for joining the Boston Zoning Commission Public Hearing, which is being held virtually to ensure the safety of the public, staff members, and the Boston Zoning Commissioners during the COVID-19 pandemic. The open public meeting law requires that I notify the public that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that an audio and visual recording of this meeting is being made. At this point, I'll take a roll call of members present for this meeting. Myself, Ms. Hatton. Mr. Nichols?
Present.
Mr. Demilla?
Present.
Mr. Luff?
Present.
Ms. Miller? Thank you. Ms. Morikawa?
Present.
Mr. Arroyo? I think Nelson had to drop off. Mr. Ostrich?
Present.
All right, and I think that was everyone. So at this point, we'll go into the nine fifteen hearing. This is a public hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider map amendment application number seven, seven, eight, and a petition for approval of the development plan for Plan Development Area number one fifty-two, sixty-six Cambridge Street, Charlestown. The hearing was duly advertised on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four in the Boston Herald. In a Boston Zoning Commission hearing on proposed petitions, the proponent will first present their case and are subject to the questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support and opposition at the same time. If you are planning to testify, please take time now to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your Zoom control panel. This will signal staff that you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, it will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for testimony, staff will announce your name and allow you to talk. You must unmute your microphone. Your webcam will not be active. In an effort to accommodate all who would like to speak about this proposal, each person will be given up to two minutes to comment. Commission's staff will indicate when thirty seconds remain. At that time, please conclude your remarks so that the hearing may continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a period of five to 10 minutes for response rebuttal if they so desire. Will the BPDA please begin the presentation?
Thank you and good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Peck, and I'm a senior project manager in the Development Review Department here at the BPDA. We are here before you this morning to discuss the proposed development plan for Plan Development Area number one fifty-two, sixty-six Cambridge Street, and the associated sixty-six Cambridge Street project. The sixty-six Cambridge Street PDA development plan is located on a four-acre site at sixty-six Cambridge in the Charlestown neighborhood of Boston. The development plan envisions the construction of two new buildings containing approximately eight hundred and twelve thousand square feet of gross floor area, including ten thousand square feet of retail restaurant space, with the remaining building areas office and research laboratory space. The project also includes up to four hundred and eighty-seven off-street vehicle parking spaces and approximately forty-one thousand square feet of open space. The development team filed their project notification form on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, followed by a draft project impact report on September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The development team then filed a draft Plan Development Area development plan on December fifth, twenty twenty-three. The BPDA hosted three public meetings and three IAG meetings between August twenty twenty-two and January twenty twenty-four to review the project and the associated PDA development plan. These meetings were advertised in the local neighborhood newspapers, posted to the BPDA's calendar, and an email notification was sent to all subscribers of the BPDA's Charlestown neighborhood updates. The proposed project received approval from the Boston Civic Design Commission on March fifth, twenty twenty-four, and BPDA Board approval on March fourteenth. At this point, I would like to hand it off to my colleague Ted from the Planning Department to present the planning context for the project, followed by a presentation from the development team. Thank you all.
Thanks, Sarah. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ted Schwartzberg. I'm the Assistant Deputy Director for Zoning Compliance at the BPDA, and I'm going to present three slides on how planning staff reviewed this proposal. Next slide, please. Next slide after that, please. As you know, after a four-year planning process, the BPDA Board adopted Plan Charlestown in September twenty twenty twenty-three. And shortly thereafter, the Zoning Commission, this group, adopted map and text zoning amendments to codify land use height and density recommendations from the plan into new zoning for Charlestown. Due to the opportunity provided by the relatively large size of many of the parcels in the area, the zoning update facilitates the use of planned development areas to encourage coordinated development that advances planning goals. This proposal is within the new Charlestown neighborhood mixed-use MU three sub-district. Next slide, please. This proposal was extensively shaped by Plan Charlestown. This proposal was extensively shaped by Plan Charlestown. As shown in the images on the screen, which are copied from the plan document, the neighborhood plan envisions a strategic deployment of greater heights in the part of Charlestown located between Rutherford Avenue and the I ninety-three corridor, while preserving the existing residential fabric on the other side of Rutherford Avenue. Next slide, please. The proposal is consistent with the allowed uses and dimensions required dimensional requirements for PDAs per the PDA six sub-district. Although the proposal's parking ratio exceeds the plan documents recommendations, the proponent has committed to reducing parking supplies. Public multimodal multimodal transportation infrastructure improvements envisioned in the neighborhood plan are built and provide alternative mobility options. As discussed, the project is not only consistent with the key planning goals, but also the community priorities for new development in this part of Charles Charlestown highlighted in the plan, including ground floor retail, new open space, adding to a proposed network of open space in Charlestown called the Green Loop, and contributing to a transit shuttle. Thank you, and I'll now turn it over to the proponents to present their project in more detail.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Ted and Sarah. I appreciate everybody being here, Commissioners, BPDA staff, everyone on the call. Um it's been a very robust three-year-plus process on this project, and like Ted said, we've worked closely with the Plan Charlestown team and are very grateful to be here and appreciate everyone's time. Uh next slide, please. Um my name is Danny Guadagnoli. I'm with the Fallon Company, and I'm joined today um by Ed Owens, President of the Owens Companies. Uh this project is a partnership between the Fallon Company and the Owens Companies, and Ed and his family have owned this site uh for many years. So before diving into the design and a little bit more about the project, I wanted to first pass it to Ed uh to speak a little bit about the history of the site.
Thanks, Danny. Thank you, Commissioners. Happy to be here today. Um some brief background on the site. Uh as Danny had mentioned, my family has owned this site for over thirty-five years now. It's an old industrial site. Uh it was once home to Boston Public School buses for over two decades. Today, the site is vacant, unutilized, and we've been at this process since two thousand nineteen, working with the community and stakeholders, and we're happy to share our vision for the future. So with that, I'll turn it back to Danny.
Thanks, Ed. So I'll just give a brief overview of the site context and um what we're proposing. And then I've also, we've also got John Sullivan, President of SGA, our lead architect on the project. He's on the call as well, and he'll dive into the specifics on the design. So a little bit more about the site. Uh for us, you know, seeing where this site is placed within this developing area west of Rutherford Ave, the real opportunity here for us was connectivity, particularly if you look at this opportunity to connect Sullivan Square Station, the Lost Village to Hood Park. Um right now, this is not an area that's navigable by foot, so that was an important piece for us. And then the relationship to the highway, uh that's I ninety-three on the backside of the site. Uh the site has a significant um portion that abuts ninety-three, so navigating that was also uh very important in terms of how we approached this up this project. Next slide, please. So these are some of the, some shots of existing site conditions. You can see in the top left um very much an impervious site, underutilized. And then as you look at some of these closer shots, you can see that right now it's not navigable by foot. There's a significant grade change. If you're looking uh north, you're looking from D Street, from that bottom-left image, looking from where Hood Park is, north towards Cambridge Street, towards the MBTA Station, there's about a sixteen-foot grade change. And you can also see there's an ominous kind of uh looming uh rail and and highway infrastructure over the site. So uh navigating that was was important and and kind of buffering against that and and making sure the open space faced the community and making sure back of house uh was against the highway was was a big part of how we came up with our design. Um and then, of course, navigating this grade change with a pedestrian connection uh we thought was was a critical, a critical benefit to the community. Next slide, please. So in terms of the proposed projects, Sarah hit on them at the beginning, um but the statistics are here on the screen. It's about an eight hundred twelve thousand square foot project with about ten thousand square feet of retail. Uh the remainder of the buildings geared towards life science users, uh two levels of below-grade parking, and an acre of publicly accessible open space. And we're really proud of the open space in particular. Um it very much creates a a great terminus of Hood Park, which are those buildings on the left part of the page. Uh those are future phases of Hood Park, and Hood Green is in the foreground. So we really tried to relate to that and create a special open space along D Street that then takes you through the site all the way to the Sullivan Square MBTA Station and the Lost Village. So with that, uh I will turn it over to John Sullivan and SGA to talk more about the design. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Danny, and thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to start with the the proposed site plan, um which Danny just kind of described a little bit um and some of the important site planning drivers that organized uh the proposed project. Um but you know, by way of orientation, to the left of this page, you see the Hood Park Master Plan and Stack Street, which is kind of the main thoroughfare in that plan. And to the right of this page, you see the Sullivan Square T Station. Two really important drivers for this project were, you know, number one was from a pedestrian and and cyclist standpoint, how do you connect the Sullivan Square T Station to to Hood Park? And our project is organized in such a way where the buildings are massed to allow a really vibrant and well-organized public realm to um curate a a really active experience, you know, along along that spine that you kind of see below uh below the sixty-six Cambridge uh North Building. Uh both buildings are also organized in a way to to provide a buffer against the the elevated highway, which is really important for the site. The public realm favors the inside of the site, the buildings that are, you know, independently standing but are are connected by a a shared podium. Uh you know, buffer the buffer the neighborhood from from the elevated highway, uh which helps with noise, visibility, air quality, and some other important and uh important aspects. And then and then lastly, as it relates to the public realm, and you'll see some more images, you can you can see the amount of green that that comes off the page here. We're 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 really proud of the of the open space. It's adjacent to active retail and other active uses. Um onsite and offsite, D Street and and its current condition is very um challenging from a pedestrian standpoint. It's not walkable. It's not inviting. And we've extended some of those improvements to include D Street to really knit this neighborhood together. Next slide, please. Here you see the buildings uh looking from the east. Um you can see there's a a variation in height between the north building, which is in the foreground, and the south building, which is in the background. Um and and we're very excited by the architecture itself. It's it's ordered, yet very dynamic and sculptural, um very expressive of these as being forward-looking, you know, R and D buildings. Um there's a varied roof scape, which is very important for this type of building that, you know, we think provides a nice addition to the skyline. Um and then we paid very careful attention to the base of these buildings to allow for a lot of transparency and porous conditions to really activate that that public realm. And you can see in this image two things. One is the the grade change that, you know, we're navigating across the bottom of uh, you know, be between Sullivan Square and and D Street or Cambridge Street and D Street, which is considerable. Um and then the relationship to the elevated highway beyond. Next slide, please. And and here you can see that relationship more directly with the elevated highway, the on-ramp, which uh or the off-ramp, which abuts our site. Um and then at the bottom of the page, you can see that podium and how the back of house users are really oriented towards this side of the site so that we can provide that critical buffer. Next slide, please. Here you can see the, you know, the buildings are expressed three-dimensional. Again, we're we're very excited about the forms, about the varied roof scape, um about the language on the on the facade, and and really about how these buildings meet the ground um to support that, you know, that vibrant connector that, you know, we feel is really needed um in in this neighborhood. You can see uh Hood Park to the left, D Street in the foreground, which again, this is the proposed condition, um which which is a great improvement over, you know, what exists today. And then, you know, then you can see at the base of the building, all of the vibrant um planting, hardscape, landscape elements, and program elements that um, you know, shape that that public realm expression. Next slide, please. So this gives you a sense of what that experience is like for pedestrians. Um very, very rich in terms of planting, in terms of outdoor areas for for seating, for gathering. Um a lot of the, all of the retail is is organized along these edges, uh as well as some of the other active gathering spaces within the building. So there's meant to be a very, you know, vis- visual and physical kind of porous relationship between the the indoor and the outdoor experience. Um and again, you can just see the the attention to detail that's been paid along the the ground plane to really provide a nice um connection between the the train station and and Hood Park. The lower right-hand im- image, you can see that that is an entry gateway. It's important to, you know, you probably have to squint to see it a little bit, but important to to notice Hood Stack, you know, be beyond. That was a a an important visual marker that, you know, we're aiming to preserve. And then there's an important program element in this corner of the building as well, which is a a biomedical training center for for folks that, you know, is expressive of the building's use, but a a nice uh connection to the community as well. Next slide, please. And then this this shows you, you know, kind of the overall vision of the of the building in its context, you know, next next to Hood Park and its and its full build-out, which which you can see on this image. Um we're very excited again by the forms, by its ability to connect, you know, critical nodes with it within the neighborhood um with its ability to buffer the highway, but also make a, you know, a a very unique um expression to to be integrated into the skyline of of Boston. So with that, I will turn it back to to Danny. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Next slide, please. So this lists some of the community benefits. Obviously, we think there's a lot more um and very excited to to deliver a project that that truly benefits the community and um again, very appreciative of everyone on the call today and grateful for, you know, what we think was a tremendous three years of feedback and engagement um from community members and city agencies and and uh you know, across the board. It's been a robust process and um we're grateful and uh look forward to your questions and um looking forward to bringing this project to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Um do any of the Commissioners have any questions for the presenting team? I think you can take the presentation down maybe then. Thank you. Thanks. Any questions um from the Commissioners? I don't see any. So um Jeff, at this point, um could we go to public testimony? And I would ask that as people are um are uh announced, that you could just please state your name, your affiliation, and your position for or against the proposed project. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a few raised hands. Uh first, I see Council Murphy's Office. Joe, go ahead. I'll mute yourself.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh can you hear me, Commissioners?
Yes, we can. We can.
So my name's Joe McGeckren. I work for a city council at large, Erin Murphy, and we would like to go on record in support of this proposal today, and um we appreciate the proposal, a lot of hard work over the years. We appreciate the commission and their thoughtful consideration, but we would like to go on record in support today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh next is Brian Callahan. Brian, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Um my name is Brian Callahan, a lifelong resident of Charlestown. I uh was on the uh I A G uh over the last three or four years on this project this and also live in the Lost Village, which is a neighborhood of Charlestown adjacent to Sullivan Square. I would like to congratulate Ed Owens and his team for meeting with us uh over the last five or six years to talk about uh this site, which is a very challenging site. Uh and we are very excited to support Ed and the Fallon Group. The thing that excites us the most is Cambridge Street is probably one of the most planted streets in the city. And Ed and his team have come up with a wonderful pedestrian walkway that will connect our area of Charlestown to Sullivan Square Train Station off of Cambridge Street, where there will be trees and a walkway to the Hood Office Park and further into Charlestown. So we congratulate uh the efforts that they put into the community, and we're looking forward to this happening. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh Miriam Ortiz. Miriam, go ahead.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Um hello, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Miriam Ortiz, and I live in Hyde Park. I am speaking on behalf of Justice Star Corporation to express our strong support for the sixty-six Cambridge Street um project. We are a community development corporation and run a very successful tuition-free biomedical careers program. Uh we are currently actively recruiting Boston residents for our next cohort this fall. Eighty-five percent of our uh graduates secure jobs in the life science with an average salary gain of about twenty thousand dollars. We have partnered with Fallon to operate an additional cohort of A T students at this new state-of-the-art training facility. In the past, limitations have restricted us to running just one eighteen-person cohort, and this transit-oriented project will allow us to change that. Uh we have seen Fallon's commitment to advancing economic opportunity for community members, especially in Charlestown. And uh we're excited that the training space is central, is accessible, and a prominent part of the project. We're really looking forward to working with the Fallon Company, the Owens Company, the BPDA, and the project's neighbors to realize the potential.
Thank you, Miriam.
Okay, Cesar Soto. Go ahead. And I'll go to the next one, Madam Chair. Uh Joey Nicholas?
Hello. Um thank you, everybody. Um my name is Joey Nicholas, and I am the Executive Director of Street Ivy. Street Ivy is a local nonprofit that focuses on career development for the youth of our community. Uh throughout the year, we run education-based programs for youth to learn business, entrepreneurship, and career readiness. Um the Fallon Company has been a a key supporter of our nonprofit, and together we actually run a uh real estate entrepreneurship program each summer for our local youth. I just wanted to express my full support of this initiative. Uh this new development will be a key opportunity for our youth to learn uh from behind the scenes life cycle that goes into bringing a project like this to life. Uh Danny and the rest of the Fallon team have shown me their deep commitment to have positive impact on the community, and I am fully behind these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey.
And Elaine Donovan. Elaine, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Elaine Donovan. I'm with Council Colletta's Office, and the Council would like to go in support at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elaine.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, at this point, um I would close out the public hearing and ask uh if any of the Commissioners uh want and go into our business session to either discuss the proposed motion or move it forward with a motion in a second.
I just want to go on record saying Street Ivy Program is a really, really good program. It's very intentional about including Black and Brown people in real estate where um we don't have um a lot of that in the in that uh scholarship. So thank you, Fallon Group.
Uh I'll make a motion to approve map amendment, application number seven, seven, eight, development plan for Plan Development Area number one, five, two um sixty-six Cambridge Street, Charlestown, map two E Charlestown Neighborhood District.
I hear a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Ayesha.
Thank you, Ayesha. Is there any discussion on the motion? Or the second? Okay, at this point, I'll take a roll call uh vote. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Demilla?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Morikawa?
Yes.
Mr. Luff? Drew, you're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you, Drew. Um Mr. Ostrich?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The motion carries seven, zero.
Mute.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good luck, guys. Okay, um we'll move on to our nine-thirty hearing. Um thank you for joining the Boston Zoning Commission Public Hearing, which is being held virtually to ensure the safety of the public, staff members, and the Boston zoning commissioners during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The open public meeting law requires I notify the public that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that an audio and visual recording of this meeting is being made. At this point, I'd like to take a roll call vote of members present at the beginning of the meeting. Mr. Nichols?
Present.
Uh Mr. Demilla?
Present.
Ms. Miller?
Present.
Ms. Morikawa?
Present.
Mr. Luff?
Present.
Mr. Ostrich?
Present.
And myself, Ms. Hatton, present. I don't think Nelson has come back on, so there are seven of us, and at this point, I would um would note that this is a public hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider map amendment application number seven, 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 and a petition for approval of the master plan for Plan Development Area number one, five, three, four, twenty-five, Medford Street, Charlestown. and a petition for approval of the master plan for Plan Development Area number one, five, three, four, twenty-five Medford Street, Charlestown. The hearing was duly advertised on March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four in the Boston Herald. In a Boston Zoning Commission hearing on proposed petitions, the proponent will first present their case and are subject to the questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support and opposition at the same time. If you're planning to testify, please take time now to verify that your computer microphone is active. Click the hand icon on your Zoom control panel. This will signal staff that you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, it will be blue. If you're calling into the meeting and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for all testimony, staff will announce your name and allow you to talk. You must unmute your microphone as your webcam will not be active. In an effort to accommodate all who would like to speak about this proposal, each person will be given up to two minutes to comment. Commission staff will indicate when thirty seconds remain. At that time, please conclude your remarks so that the hearing may continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a period of five to ten minutes for rebuttal if they so desire. Will the B P D A please begin the presentation?
Thank you again, and good morning, commissioners. Once again, my name is Sarah Peck, and I'm a senior project manager in the Development Review Department. We are here before you this morning to discuss the proposed master plan for Plan Development Area number one fifty-three, four twenty-five Medford Street. I do want to note that this P D A master plan was presented as P D A number one forty-four at the B P D A Board, but that has since been corrected to the current number, which is one fifty-three. The four twenty-five Medford Street P D A master plan is located on an approximately twenty-four-point-six acre site located at four twenty-five Medford Street, as well as portions of four sixty-five Medford Street and five twenty-nine, five twenty-nine Medford Street in the Charlestown neighborhood of Boston. The master plan contemplates the construction of six new buildings containing approximately one-point-seven-nine million square feet in total of mixed-use development. This includes approximately five-hundred-and-ten-thousand-three-hundred gross square feet of residential uses, nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-five-hundred gross square feet of research, laboratory, and office space, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand gross square feet of hotel space, sixty-five-thousand-nine-hundred gross square feet of retail and restaurant space, uh, six-thousand-five-hundred gross square foot community center space, and up to eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine vehicle parking spaces located in a below-grade garage. The master plan also includes the creation of a twenty-four-hundred-foot-long resiliency component along the waterfront by the Mystic River with publicly accessible landscaping throughout. This resiliency component will be delivered in the first phase of the development of the master plan. The development team filed their P D A master plan on November fifth, twenty-twenty-one. The B P D A hosted three public meetings and four I A G meetings between February twenty-twenty-two and January twenty-twenty-four. These meetings were advertised in the local newspapers, posted to the B P D A's calendar, and an email notification was sent to all subscribers of the B P D A's Charlestown Neighborhood Updates. The proposed project received approval from the Boston Civic Design Commission on August first, twenty-twenty-three, and B P D A Board approval on March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. At this point, I would like to hand it off to my colleague Ted Schwartzberg from the Planning Department to present the planning context for the project, followed by a presentation from the development team. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Again, my name is Ted Schwartzberg. I'm Assistant Deputy Director for Zoning Compliance at the B P D A. Uh, and I will present three more slides on the planning context for this proposal. Next slide, please. And next slide. As I mentioned earlier, in the fall of twenty-twenty-three, the B P D A Board adopted Plan Charlestown, and shortly afterwards, this commission codified that plan into zoning. Uh, I'm excited that we now have two projects quickly following from that planning. The proposed pro- project is subject to the regulations of the Charlestown Maritime Economy Reserve Subdistrict. In addition, the proposed project is within the coastal flood resilience overlay district. Next slide, please. The proposal significantly advances the recommendations of the coastal resilience solutions for East Boston and Charlestown. Final report, which analyzed and recommended strategies for protecting the neighborhoods from sea level rise and coastal flooding. As shown in the images on this slide, which are taken from that report, based on modeling and analysis, the highest flood, highest priority flood point entry into Charlestown is at Sullivan Square, where floodwater would inundate not only the Flatley Site and Ryan Playground, but also a large proportion of Charlestown's interior neighborhood, as well as our neighbors in Charles, in in Cambridge and Somerville. As shown in the image on the right, to address this threat, the coastal resilience plan recommended recommended integrating coastal flood protection with open space improvements to provide effective adaptable solutions that provide additional public open space benefit. The proposed project before you today was designed to provide the resilience infrastructure contemplated in this report with a new system of elevated parks and pathways along the waterfront. Next slide, please. Plan development areas are allowed on this site, given that they provide certain public benefits and in turn P D A's established dimensional requirements of the projects. The proposed project was highly shaped by the Plan Charlestown process, delivering planning for resilient and publicly accessible Mystic River waterfront intended to connect Ryan Playground, new pedestrian and bike connections through existing lots and more. The proposal's density is consistent with the plan's recommendations. And although the project's parking ratio exceeds the plan recommendations, the proponent has committed to reducing parking supply as public multimodal infrastructure improvements envisioned in the plan are built and has committed to provide alternative mobility options. Thank you, and I'll now turn it over to the proponent team to present their proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Thanks, Ted. Good morning, members of the Commission and Madam Chair. My name is John Roach, and I am the CEO of the Flatley Company, the longtime owner of the property known properties known as Shraft City Center in Charlestown, the 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 subject of this proposed new zoning overlay district. The Flatley family has been an active member of the Charlestown community since nineteen eighty-five, and both Dan Flatley and I have children and grandchildren living in Charlestown today. We have worked very hard over the last two and a half years to bring our vision for the redevelopment of four twenty-five Medford Street to the community and are proud that our proposal includes a resiliency component with parks and recreational amenities designed to protect well beyond our own properties, inclusive of hundreds of hundreds of acres of lower Charlestown that are today at a serious risk of climate change, flood damage. We're also excited that our talented team of designers have integrated a community path in thirteen acres of new open public space, which will, for the first time in ninety years, welcome the public back to what was once Dewey Beach in the waterfront along the Mystic River. We thank you, the B P D A staff, electives, and the community for helping us get to this point. I will now hand over the mic to Jamie, uh, to briefly walk you through the proposed project.
Yeah, thank you, John. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, Jamie Von Klimper, architect with Cone Patterson Fox Architects for the project. So this just start with one summary view, looking down what we call Olmstead Way. We're looking from the south to the north towards the water in the distance. And since we are adjacent to Dougherty Park to the south, designed originally by Frederick Law Olmstead, is a great, great responsibility and opportunity to make landscape a very important part of this offer. Next, please. Uh, just without going into detail, the timeline here illustrates the very many meetings that the team has had with local neighborhood groups, with Boston government groups and others to morph and evolve the plan. This is about four and a half years of work on the timeline, moving from a bigger aggregated set of buildings in on the left to more of a permeable plan where walkways and pathways lead through the site to connect Charlestown to the Mystic River. And then on the right-hand side, finally, a further adjustment to create a more supple variety of spaces that will be very, very user-friendly for the community, as well as those who are working and living in the complex. Next, please. So overall, we all understand, just want to underscore how strategically advantageous this site is. The resiliency will be talked about by Sanjukta, our landscape architect from Field Operations. But also, we can think of this as a can as a way to connect to the water from Charlestown. Uh, and we'll go into a little bit more detail about that in a moment. Next, please. Existing condition of the old Sugar Factory parking lots presents us with what in effect is a little bit more of a barrier or a gap, a non-connecting gap between Charlestown and the water. Next, please. And to underscore the six major goals of these strategies of design, I'll go from upper left to lower right. The waterfront is such a big boon to Charlestown. It could be. It's really not capitalized on at this point. So that's five acres of space. Next over, public access. Those arrows designating walkways and view corridors from Dougherty Park and from the hill higher up in Charlestown towards the water. Uh, next over is east-west open space along what were old railway tracks now preserved in more archaeological form. But it's a one-acre park of a hundred-and-twenty feet wide, which can be used by the community very close to Dougherty Park. The bottom left, we are minimizing the impact of vehicular movement through the site by siphoning off cars as they come in to go below before they need to cross the site. Uh, that's been subject of a lot of study. In the middle bottom, the integrating of of engineering-wise means of resiliency of water protection uh, along the the park to the north. Um, again, Sanjukta will go into more detail on that. And finally, on the bottom right uh, is in those little patches of red, we're indicating retail, food and beverage, and community uses that will make the ground floor, the street level of this collection of buildings and spaces into a very friendly, usable, pedestrian-worthy environment. Next, please. So the big red arrows kind of repeat again this theme of connecting from lower right to upper left from the water uh, from the 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 Charlestown community towards the water and of course, back again in a variety of different widths of walkways. So there's a hierarchy, a different set of purposes to each one. Then, uh, the green arrows showing east-west connectivity along the waterfront park on the upper left, and then along the area that skirts Medford Street that I mentioned is a linear park as well. Next, please. So I won't go into each one of these to keep things short, but there are many, many areas of of smaller focus within all of this open space, and that gives us, we think, a rich variety of experiences, some for exercise and fitness, others just for appreciation of plants, others for more pedestrian walking activities, and some others yet to articulate a heart in the middle of this cluster. Uh, so, uh, Sanjukta will go through a little bit more detail, all of these, but a lot of art and skill going into and great hope for the project going into each one of these open space area designs. Next, please. Thirteen acres, by the way. And so now to hand it back over to Sanjukta, I'll just leave you with this view looking hovering as if we were in a drone above the water, looking back towards Charlestown and buildings on the right-hand side, residential buildings. On the left-hand side, office slash laboratory buildings, framing this Olmstead Way. Sanjukta.
Thanks, Jamie. Um, I'm Sanjukta Sen, um, with Field Operations with the Landscape Architects for the project. Uh, as Jamie was mentioning, uh, there's really a constellation of public amenities that we are planning in this development. Uh, they are, they really fall into three major categories. The first one being the uh, five, almost five-acre waterfront park that you're seeing uh, on this slide. It incorporates a variety of edge conditions, ability to access water, be on the waterfront, play on the waterfront, go to the beach on the waterfront again. And along with it, next slide, please. Uh, one of the key elements that Jamie touched on is its role as as an integrated flood resilience infrastructure that will reduce flood risk not only for the site, but a significant amount of the neighborhood that that it fronts. Uh, you can kind of see the existing site condition and the proposed mitigation that would, as it would skirt the shoreline, um, uh, on the site. Next. Uh, we are proposing a sort of landscape version of of the of 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 flood mitigation, of flood protection that that you can kind of see as a red line. It's a hidden berm that that really, uh, runs along the entirety of the waterfront, uh, parallel to it. The idea is that it it is graded in a manner to allow for access and different types of waterfront experiences. So while it is, it still lifts, um, a majority of the site above, uh, it also allows, um, uh, the the users of the park to be near the water, something that we are trying to balance by integrating it uh, into the landscape. So you still don't lose the ability to actually be near the water and be next to the water. Uh, we are allowing lots, we are hoping to design many types of spaces that encourage habitat uh, that that recall the the history of the site as a beach, uh, sort of Dewey Beach two-point-oh, if you've seen the sort of the middle left of the page, uh, a large harbor lawn and play spaces and workout spaces that would really encourage a diversity of uses uh, on the site. Next, please. Thank you. Uh, here you see an image of a shoreline, um, strategy that we are looking at uh, as in the Mystic Nature Trail that connects Ryan Playground. In terms of elevation, we are also connecting to Ryan Playground, um, uh, and then new, uh, they are doing their own resiliency strategy and upgrades on the park. Uh, so that's one key gap in the resiliency strategy that's going to be filled with this project. Uh, we are hoping to use the shoreline conditions to actually deploy a set of intertidal and subtitle strategies that will enhance um, enhance the ecology of the shoreline. Next. Uh, this is, uh, Jamie showed an image of this space before. It's it's, uh, it's what we call Olmstead Way. It's on axis with Dougherty Park, which was, as you all know, uh, an Olmstead, uh, designed park, uh, and we really borrowed our landscape design idiom to a great extent from that language to, uh, to to give it that sense of continuity and that idea of meandering to the waterfront. Uh, the Olmstead, uh, walk, oh, Olmstead Way is really a park-like extension. It's not so much a street. It's really seen as uh, places for social, uh, interaction for 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 seating and for a really shaded meander to the water. Next. Next, please. Thank you.
It's on a delay, Sanjukta. This is actually the Beachway.
Oh, sorry. I I think I might be getting a slight delay. If you could go back to Mystic Way. Sorry.
Okay, Mystic Way is up.
Okay, Mystic Way is, this is a view down the the parallel street to Olmstead Way. This is a, uh, this is again, yet another garden street that that heads to, um, the Paseo Space, which is another passageway down to the waterfront, uh, which Jamie will speak of. Next, next, next slide, please.
You're on Beachway now.
Great. Um, and Beachway is another, is is a pathway that takes you to the Dewey Beach. Uh, this is really seen as a trail access that takes, uh, that allows you for, allows continuous bike access that takes you all the way to the community path and also connects to the waterfront at the Dewey Beach location. Next.
It's showing railroad ramble.
Uh, this is the 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 zone that's parallel to Medford Street, um, and what John earlier was referring to as the community path. We, there are existing railroad tracks and beautiful existing trees here that that this design is, um, is seeking to retain and blend the community path into it as an as an experience that welcomes the community into the site. Next.
Yep, Mystic Square.
Uh, this Mystic Square, which Jamie correctly described earlier as the heart of this development. It's really seen as this pedestrian-first space, uh, which allows, uh, the limited number of vehicles that will allow come on the site to drop, to drop off, uh, and and leave the site, but also really embraces a design and that allows for pedestrian crossing and pedestrian safety. Next, and I think I believe this is where I'm handing off to Jamie.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And that, by the way, and the last one was a hotel coming at that. Yeah, yeah, thank you. And that, by the way, and the last one was a hotel coming at that center. In any case, uh, that's right. So that's the hotel to the right. Now, going to the next image, uh, this is again to stress the uh design of the traffic and the parking to show that the center part of this plan is for pedestrians, not cars. If the cars are siphoned off by ramps at the edges of the in and the out, and then in red, we can see the service access drive. This is taken actually through Flatley Property. That's benefit to everybody so that the trucks are going down underground to loading bays rather than uh being in the middle or on the site itself. Next, please. The ground plane, I think I mentioned, you know, the potential word, the the insistence on active retail at the ground, that is thought to be, by the way, in great part, local retail, local providers of crafts of food, et cetera, and in darker red, that L-shaped community space. So that is six and a half thousand square foot to be um, I I guess, uh, you know, uh, managed, programmed, et cetera, by the community. So more to come on that. But a strategic location where it's in the pathway and convenient from where most people will flow through the site. Next, please. And then um this magenta color piece of interior space within uh that larger laboratory building, we're calling a Paseo because uh it's a public pass-through space. Uh, the thought is that it should be enclosed from weather at some times of year, but that there'd be large operable door-window uh elements that could open it up to breezes, but ideas to get as much as possible full community and um passerby use of a very attractive space. Next, please. And then although i- in this uh um Article eighty A phase, we are not in really in heavy facade design and the architecture. We will move ahead um into that phase, but already it was important in our discussions with BPDA and BCDC to promise that the, what we all want, which is a a quality of architecture that gives us some kind of harmonious memory of the past, of the greater buildings, the more well-loved buildings of Charlestown and the surrounding industrial buildings in the area and even beyond that in the region. Uh, so that we expect there will be brick of different colors. So there's some variety, uh metal that has some depth and detail. And uh if you see the little cartoon in the lower left, those uh uh kind of in the middle of the left, uh, a sense of the different buildings that that dot along the hill of Charlestown. There are also a variety of colors and textures. So we'll emulate that in devising the architecture for this set of buildings. Next, please. So just running down the statistics, which are very important to us, thirteen acres of open space, one and a half acres along that stretch of Medford Street, the linear east-west area for dog run and walking, one plus acres for the Olmstead Way connector from Dougherty side to the water, uh, four hundred new trees in just this area alone, and the waterfront, a five-acre park, uh, four different connective passageways between south and north to get to that park and the resiliency, which is a huge uh important measure for the world today, uh thinking about where the sea level rise will take us to twenty seventy and half a mile of accessible shoreline. So there aren't, as Sundrak showed, of creating protection without making barriers is is a tricky thing to do, but we think it's it's really a clever solution that Field Operations has come up with. Uh, next, please. So I think that uh takes us to the final set of issues of of the community space, which I talked about before, six and a half thousand square feet of community retail at an affordable rate. So this is encouraging local vendors to participate, ten thousand square feet, community paths discussed, and in the economy, uh fifteen million uh dollars of affordable housing exactions. Twenty percent of the residential units will be affordable. The construction jobs during the project works will be a thousand, but more important, we think, two and a half thousand permanent jobs made possible by the project. And so that takes us to the end of this short summary, and thank you for your, for listening.
Thank you. So that concludes the presentation?
That's correct.
Thank you. At this point, I would ask if any of the commissioners have any questions of the presenters?
Uh, just a quick, quick question, if I may, uh, maybe two quick questions. One is, can you just summarize and maybe I I couldn't do the math, man? What is the, what is the breakdown of of the expected uses of the site? Hotel, uh, commercial office, housing overall. And then second sort of question was just, I was curious on a few more details on that um service access you uh detailed for for a minute uh in the presentation.
Right, yeah, thank you for the question. I just summarized first the areas uh that o- overall, we have about um um of the research laboratory. Uh, we have about a million one, a million two square, gross square feet. Uh, less than that, actually. Uh, let's say a million one uh of hotel, uh two hundred thousand square gross square feet, and then of residential, uh five hundred and fifty thousand square feet. And then your question about the, about the service, should we go back to that image? Uh, was this about the above-grade, below-grade uh placement?
Yeah, I was just trying to understand the access, you know, where the service uh sort of off of Medford, Medford Street and how that accesses the site and departs.
Yeah, the trucks would come in and it's another view if we go to the plan uh closer to the Shrafts Building. And then, and you see there's a red, an image with a a red arrow, which should come up in a minute. I'll say you're there when we're there. Yep, right here. And you see they would enter and from the bottom left off of uh our curb cut down Bunker Hill Street near the Shraft Center and then uh enter basically what is the edge of parking lot and driveways and then wind their way clockwise past four sixty-five Medford and then go underground, right where you see that number one and the arrow ends. And then from there, they go under the site into the basement system with uh different truck docks and elevators that connect to get to the various residential office and hotel uses. And they go out, out back along that same red arc.
Right, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the presenters? If you could take the presentation down, that would be great. Thank you. I don't see any other questions. So at this point, um, we will have a business session after. So at this point, why don't we um go ask for public testimony? And if I could, um, please remind uh anyone calling in to make comments to please announce your name, affiliation and your position on the proposed project.
Give us a second here, Madam Chair. I don't see any raised hands right now. Give it a couple of seconds. Yeah, I I have no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. So at this point, um, I don't think there's a need for rebuttal at all, and I would ask, I would declare that the public hearing is closed and that we will go into a business session to consider the proposed uh proposed map application and um ask for any discussion or motions to uh adopt the uh item.
Um, I I would just say, look, I think, I think this is, it's a well-thought-out uh project overall, a lot of, lot of interesting elements, unique uh public benefits as well as uh, I think, well-thought-out uh project uh overall and on a site that is obviously vastly underutilized right now. So I'd be in support of approving this project. Uh, so but uh but well-thought-out, well-planned, and I'm looking forward to seeing the the individual components come down the, come down the bike into the process.
Um, I I just want to add that I I really appreciated the thoughtfulness of the uh Landscape Architecture presentation. So I commend the Landscape Architecture team on a very thoughtful presentation and I think really adds a lot to uh this project. Hopefully, it'll all take place. So fingers crossed. Thank you. I support the project as well.
Thank you.
Great. I'd echo those comments and then I'm happy to make a motion in support of map amendment application number seven seventy-seven, Development Plan for PDA number one fifty-three, four twenty-five Medford Street, Charlestown Map two-B, two-C Harbor Park District, Charlestown Waterfront. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Um, at this point, is there any further discussion on the item? Okay, seen, hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Demilla?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Morikawa?
Yes.
Mr. Luff?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrich?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So I had that uh, the motion carries seven to nothing. Good luck. And as as was said by one of the other commissioners, uh, we hope this this happens. It's a very extraordinary project.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
At this, at this point, we're going to stay in our business session um for an informational update on the Sixth Amendment to PDA number thirty-seven Prudential Center redevelopment briefing. And um I will turn it over to the BD, BPDA. This, just just as a note, this is a business session that we're in. Uh, the public is welcome to uh to listen in though. So um, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Quinn Valsich, and I'm a senior project manager in the Development Review Department at the BPDA. I'm here this morning to provide you with an update on Amendment number six to the development plan for PDA number thirty-seven that the Commission uh approved in February of this year. Following the approval of the amendment, it came to our attention that during staff review and the editing of the amendment, a few key elements of the text were lost. Because of this, some of the language as written does not maintain the intent of the amendment as it was described to the public, BPDA Board or this commission during presentations. We've made a few minor changes to the document to bring the text of the amendment back in line with the intent of the amendment. You all have been provided with a led, red line showing these changes and an updated clean version of the document. Mallory Toomey, the Deputy General Counsel of the BPDA, is here to provide some additional context on those changes. And all parties to the PDA are present at the meeting. Should you have any questions for them?
Thanks, Quinn, and thank you, Commissioners. Um, as Quinn has said, our minor text revisions just realign the amendment with its intent as filed, reviewed and presented. As initially drafted when filed, the Sixth Amendment added dormitory use within the PDA specific to the South Tower only, which is the hotel site as described in the PDA. However, through the editing process, the reference to the South Tower was inadvertently removed, making the final version unintentionally overbroad. This updated Sixth Amendment clarifies that PDA number thirty-seven, as amended, established portions within the PDA area based on ownership. The hotel site was separated out under the First Amendment, requiring that any future amendment applicable to the hotel site would only have effect on the hotel site. The language added back into this updated Sixth Amendment makes abundantly clear that the dormitory use added under the institutional uses to the PDA use exhibit is only allowed within the hotel development plan as established under the First Amendment to the PDA. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Mallory, from a process perspective, then, are you, you are looking for us to acknowledge this through a roll call vote, I imagine?
We are, yes.
And we have the language. Um, and so would the, would, would in effect, the um the motion you're looking for be to, for us to accept the updated Sixth Amendment to the PDA number thirty-seven Prudential Center redevelopment briefing? Is that the correct?
Yes, that's, that's exactly right. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, a- at this point, though, I just wanted to clarify that for everyone's information, but if if anyone has questions for Quinn or Mallory um on this, I think it clearly was just uh the intention for our discussion and our um, our vote was to limit this dormitory to the South Tower. And this is clarifying language that just uh explicitly notes that. But if anyone has any other questions of them, please, please feel free. Okay.
I guess the question, there's, there's, and there's no dispute of that from many of the parties involved or?
Nope, there are no dispute, and I believe we might even have some of uh the the parties on if they wanted to answer any questions, but um, no, everyone agreed and um both parties redlined um a a further clarification changes.
And it sounded like this was always the intention, Mallory, and it just got kind of.
That's right. And and even as presented, so I I think through uh the BPDA approved approval process, uh, the zoning commission process, uh, it was um very clear in the presentation that this was specific to the hotel site within the PDA area.
In the South Tower, yeah.
That's right.
But is the intention to have us vote today? Because I, I'll note that the agenda says it's an informational item. So it would be, it'd be odd to be voting on an informational item presented that way on the agenda.
We would prefer to have it voted to to make the uh uh approval official um with new text. Um, I feel like that's the appropriate way to to do it. Um.
I think the precedent is that we, we had done this once before. Jeff noted on B C. Um, it's, it's really, it um, it was noticed on the agenda, but it it's not changing any of the contents and and we as a zoning commission can take action on very minor Scribner or clarifying type items, is my understanding, Mallory.
That's right. Uh, that's exactly how we see this. Again, this was always intended to be as written now um a- and through the editing process. Um, against, there were minor deletions that made a a big difference, unfortunately. Um, and so we're just clarifying that now and and approving language um as we always intended it to be approved.
In in fact, it's more restrictive than the
That's right.
the text we had where the presentation was representative of the restrictive language that's in here in this revised language. So.
That's right. Thank you.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, I'm comfortable with that, but I I think going forward, if if a vote is intended, it probably isn't in the best interest of of the commission to list something as an informational matter but to signal that a vote is expected.
That, that's, well said. I I don't, I I agree, Michael. Yeah. And so at this point, if if um, are there any other comments or questions, though? Um, I obviously want everyone to have uh a good understanding. Is um, is there a a motion for us to accept this updated Sixth Amendment to PDA number thirty-seven Prudential Center redevelopment briefing uh Prudential Center redevelopment that we voted on in a prior meeting?
Oh, moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, um, at this point, then I'll just uh do a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Demilla?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Morikawa?
Yes.
Mr. Luff?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrich?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So the um, the amendment carries seven to nothing. At this point, um, this is the end of our hearing today, and I would um thank everyone for their um contributions and their time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.